All set to go, Megan, whenever you're ready.
Madam Secretary, do we have form tonight?
Yes, we do. Megan, can you hear me? No? Megan?
I can hear you.
Okay, yep, we're all set. I don't know why Megan can't.
It is?
Megan, we're all set.
Okay, phew, okay, I'm better now, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. So I'd like to call to order a meeting 1349 of the Watch You Set Regional School District, held tonight via Google Meet because of the governor's orders regarding open meeting law and the coronavirus pandemic. Tonight's meeting is being streamed live on Holden Cable TV and also streaming live on YouTube and is also being recorded. Members of the public, if you have further comments for tonight's meeting, please send them to questions@wrsd.net. That is questions@wrsd.net. We're going to start tonight with our public hearing. I do have a vast number of questions that have already been submitted prior to meeting time tonight by members of the public to be read tonight, many of which are actually in question form, so I would make sure that the administration takes careful note. Ben, if you don't mind muting. I'm getting a little fever there. Remember Mitchell? The administration should carefully note the questions that are being relayed to them by members of the public, as most of the comments tonight are in question form. We're going to start tonight with a question that states, "Why can't high school and middle school kids follow a normal schedule virtually? It seems as though this new setup of three hours of extra help in the afternoon may deprive students of proper structure and academic learning." So that person is asking for clarification on the afternoon part of the remote schedule. Our next comment tonight says that, "I am very concerned about the academic time limited to three hours for high school students. I understand they'll have projects, but why can't they follow their normal schedule? They need structure for more than three hours in the morning. I believe they should have a schedule as if they're in school. This does not mean there will be a session every day, but that is when they will get their work assigned and when a teacher may be available." Our next comment tonight comes from a constituent named Kim Bendadec. Says, "Curious as to what numbers," I believe she is referring to pandemic numbers, "need to be in place for reopening. There were less than five cases in our five towns in the last 14 days and 12 cases reported in the 14 days before that." She also wants to clear, add a little bit of clarification with a second part of her comment. She understands fully that the budget has huge impact on us returning to school, but we have to find a way to make this work. Our students are suffering. All the students are important, but I feel as though we need to find a way for our kindergarten, grade six, freshmen and seniors to go to school first. These students are starting new schools or being a senior at the start, at the end of their WRSD academic career, and if possible, one in two should return as well. These students are at a critical point of their education where they need, where they are learning to read, so they can read to learn. If we limit the grades in students in each school, we can slowly start a phased opening. Let our kids go back. What do our numbers need to be open? Less than five cases in our five towns in the last 14 days and 12 cases reported in 14 days before that. This sounds extremely safe. Now, all of Massachusetts have increasing numbers, and we are among the towns that are doing well. Please reconsider remote learning for all of our students. Please consider some sort of phased opening." Our next comment tonight comes from Leslie Mason from Sandy Ridge Road in Sterling. She states, "During the presentation, it was mentioned that WRSD could not support hybrid due to transportation issues and classroom issues for opening in the fall. At what point does this change? How do we ever get to a hybrid model with social distancing in place? We still have the same issues that we had in the fall for opening. What is the threshold to moving to hybrid? Considering five towns are still at under 2% for positive cases in the last several weeks, using the state numbers is not an accurate representation occurring in our towns. What is the criteria for the buildings to be ready? If we have budgetary issues for hybrid now, that doesn't go away one month from now, two months from now, or even three months from now." Next tonight, a message from Courtney McDonald that says, "I hope you can take some time. I'm a parent of two boys at Holden and was wondering if you could bring a non-urgent question or comment to whoever it should be directed to. I am wondering if teachers can reach out to their students and families before September 16th to give us some expectations about what their days will look like, especially now that we've learned it's full remote. I am hopeful, due to working parent's schedule and commitments, they can be informed what their day-to-day needs are sooner rather than later. Thank you in kind regards." Next tonight, we hear from Emily Starlosky from 426 Bullard Road in Holden, Massachusetts. "Good morning. I am a parent of a male first and third graders. My husband and I are lucky enough to work from home, but must maintain a full-time schedule. I'm beyond worried about school in the fall. Not sure if these are questions, comments, or wishes. One, is there any plan to offer a remote option that does not include synchronous learning? Having to facilitate meetings from 8:45 to noon every day for kids will be nearly impossible for me. If lessons were recorded and stored in a learning library, we would be able to make it work. Accessing the material on our own timeline would allow us to utilize some evenings and weekends. Two, ever since last Wednesday's night's school committee meeting, families have taken to Facebook to try to form learning pods and find tutors. Is there a plan for schools, elementary in particular, to help make the formation of small pods easier? I realize that the schools cannot require or condone out-of-school groups to form, but if parents knew who their kids' teachers were well before the start of classes, we could reach out to other parents of kids in the same class and try to cobble something together. I appreciate the opportunity to comment." Next. This comes from Kathleen McGovern. "I know how difficult this is and appreciate all your time and effort. I'm not in favor of 100% remote and want to reiterate that here. I have two young children who attend Davis Hill, entering grades three and one, and remote learning in the spring was a disaster for both of them, with different reasons for each child that it didn't work. I do not think the data numbers support a 100% remote learning plan, especially for elementary-age children. Long-term effects on both kids mentally and educationally are going to be huge. With that being said, it sounds like the remote plan is going to be what's implemented by the district, and with that route, I have the following questions and comments that I want to make sure are addressed. One, there needs to be a way that children can meet their teachers a few times in person. My suggestion is an optional outdoor meeting at the school field or outdoor classroom space in an allocated time period of one to two hours once a week for the first few days of school. Everyone would need to wear masks and keep distance, but the kids would have an opportunity to make some kind of connection with their teacher and classmates. Being that my kids are at elementary age, I do not see how they can possibly connect and have a relationship with their teacher via Zoom, having never met in person. I think this is crucial. My kids have been attending outdoor camps throughout the summer, and each camp has found a way to make this in-person interaction work effectively and safely, and I know schools can do the same. Two, the weekly or bi-weekly packets of work need to be provided to children and families ahead of time. Having a choice board with various links and printouts is not easy to follow. I know many other districts are available for the students during the springtime. It was disappointing for this option in our district. There should also be access to some of the materials that would be used in the classroom. Three, the Zoom meetings/instruction need to be a set, be during a set period of time so that families can be prepared. Four, small group meetings where students can speak with the teacher and other students need to be implemented for portions of instruction. A Zoom with 17 six-year-olds plus the teacher is not effective. Both my children completely checked out of these Zooms, and it was not instructional. Five, teacher accountability. I am sure that 90% of the teachers are going above and beyond to make this work. However, in the spring, I felt that my son's kindergarten teacher put in very little effort. How do we know teachers are being held to a uniform standard? From the spring, I heard of kindergarten teachers doing a daily Zoom, daily read, et cetera, yet my son's class had one Zoom a week, and it was unstructured. Teachers need to be required to have a set amount of time spent interacting with children. Six, I hope that the plan for remote learning is really just for quarter one. There are so many unknowns with COVID, and we need to see what happens, but I hope the district and committee will be using that additional time from quarter one to find creative and feasible ways to bring students back to in-person learning, even if it's optional where a family chooses remote learning. Thank you again." We have many more tonight, so bear with me, please. Our next message. One second, it's an attached file. All right. This person read a last-meeting school committee report. This person also suggests that seniors should start the year remote to help with the situation. By the time they've entered their senior year, many have the idea of where they want to apply to college in fall or 2020/21. At this point, there's little they can do to academically change their GPA. Therefore, being the most independent grade, they would be fine with remote until requirements are eased up and the school can open. Junior year is difficult and challenging, and many consider it to be the student's last chance to up, get grades up before applying to college. With classes like pre-calculus and chem, I believe it's imperative for students to take these more challenging classes in person. Freshman year, for obvious reasons, this person believes freshmen should also go at least two to three days in person, and if possible, take math and science in school, if it seems like history and language arts would be classes more easy to do remote. Please read the CDC guidelines for returning to school. This leads me to another idea I've been thinking about. How about teaching class or remote based on the particular class? For example, say my daughter was in school Monday and Tuesday as Group A. While in school, let's say the math, science, and middle class are the only ones taught to all school, all students in the school at the same time, along with remote students. Meanwhile, Monday and Tuesday, the language, art, history, and health classes are taught via video to the remote kids in Group B, and the hybrid Group B are home on Monday and Tuesday. This way, a language arts class and teacher can cover many students at one time. Then on Thursday and Friday, Group B would be remote, and hybrid would have math and science, and Group A would be hybrid and have language arts, history, and health via video. Again, those teachers can cover a large group of students. This will cut down on the number of teachers trying to do remote and hybrid at the same time, and they would all be able to take the difficult classes while in school. Next, we hear from Bridget Cacola. "Like many other WRSD parents, my husband and I work. Our children are the ages 11, 9, 6, and 3. Remote learning posed a particular challenge for us this spring because Zoom calls and trying to assist our children while we are also working. Both our work requires live teaching and running tele service sessions at specific preset of times. Our children are young and require supervision. Our internet will not accommodate so many family members logged on at once, nor do we have the correct devices. My question is this: Will remote learning take place with live classes or pre-recorded lessons to help working families?" The next comment comes from Robert Remillard, who states, "I hope this evening finds you and committee members well. I would first like to thank all the school committee members for their work during this unprecedented time. During, during normal times, the job of the committee is hard enough. I can only imagine what you all must be dealing with. With all due respect to the committee and administration, I must say that I was very disappointed that there was not more substance to the plan that was presented last week. Am I correct in saying that students would have class from 9:00 to noon only, excluding homeroom, of course, and that there will be teachers available for 12 to 3:00 to answer questions? If so, how many times a week will my daughter have math class? Two, three at the most? During a normal school semester, this would not be the case, but because this plan is remote, it is. I'm concerned the administration had since April, because we knew students were not going back in the spring, to come up with a solid plan to satisfy parents and students in regards to the 2020, 2021 school year, and this is the best they can do? And to be perfectly honest, when students left the building on March 12th, the curriculum that was taught for the remainder of the school year did not come close to scratching the surface of what they should have learned. Please tell me that this fall will be different. What will the grading system be? Will teachers be accountable for the time allotted? And will students return to class in a hybrid setting when it's safe to do so? What does that mean, and who decides that? We have other districts, yes, smaller than ours, opening hybrid from the start. Was this considered for Watch You Set? If no, why not? And what about our most vulnerable students that need to return to school as soon as possible? Why haven't arrangements been made to put them in school, even in hybrid? I know I am like many other parents who have so many questions and concerns in regards to the school year, and quite honestly, what looked like a very nonspecific, we can change and the fly type of plan that was presented last week. I was hoping to see more substance, and I was very disappointed. I can only hope the administration will go back to the drawing board to come up with a more detailed plan that includes the steps they are taking to get our buildings welcome to ready students back, even if it's in a hybrid setting. I know we can do better. We have to do better. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you this evening." Next tonight, we hear from Frank Chaconi of 156 Brattle Street in Holden, Massachusetts. He states, "First off, thank you to the school committee members for volunteering your time. My question is about the number of instructional hours our kids should be getting. It was drawn from 9:90 to 9:35 by the state for the upcoming school year. 9:35 divided by 170 is 5.5 instructional hours per day. The proposal by the district has three hours of online, and with an additional three hours of online support, not instruction, which is only 510 hours of instruction. Why are our kids getting shortchanged on 425 hours of instruction? That is almost half a school year. I think it is clear that online support being available and instruction are two very different things. Thank you." Next tonight, from Roxanne Grigen in Jefferson, Massachusetts. "How flexible is a district going to be on attendance for the synchronous learning? Many parents, including myself, are now in a position which will need to have our children supervised by other adults. In some situations, my children might not be able to attend class or meetings or complete all work in that particular school day. I hope that the district takes the challenges of working families into consideration. I would hate to have issues with my daughter's remote attendance impact her moving forward to the next grade." Next tonight, an email from Anna Kosterek. "Hello, I hope this email finds you well. I want you to acknowledge the difficult decisions that you have to make. I am contacting you on behalf of parents who are essential workers and required to work outside the house. The parents who do not speak English and parents who are unable to make remote or hybrid work. I'm a mother of two boys ages 7 and 9. I'm an essential employee, and English is not my or my husband's first language. Given the push for remote learning in the fall, we're looking for childcare options that will allow our boys to participate in remote learning when we're not able to oversee or assist with the process. After contacting Representative Ferguson's office, I was referred back to you and informed that the decision to reopen schools is a local decision. Childcare options that can accommodate remote learning are not available at this point and will be limited in the fall. Holden had two facilities open in the spring for kids of essential workers, just two. Not all of us can financially manage to pay babysitters or nannies, and we have no other alternatives at this point. Is the school responsible for babysitting our kids? No, but life decisions are made based on the school calendar. Given the remote starts of the year, we need the district to move, work with childcare providers to create options that will allow our kids of essential workers continue to work. I've reached out to Denise Morano from the Holden Rec Department, who is hopeful that an option will be available but has no answer for us. Has the district met with childcare facilities in the towns to plan for alternative programs that allow kids to participate in remote learning while essential employees continue to provide service to our communities? I am emailing you to urge you and the school committee to think of those who are required to work outside the house. Our kids have been on the front lines of this pandemic with us since March 12th. They've attended childcare programs when most stayed at home, adjusted to different ways of life, faced masks, social distancing, constantly washing their hands. It's a norm for them now, and these facilities have successfully provided care to our kids for months now. Nothing is as good or as bad as we thought it would be. When the district provides remote learning, how will our kids participate in their education? Us essential workers, working parents, parents who don't speak English, parents with kids with special needs will need alternatives, programs that are able to assist with remote learning. Please understand that we need affordable options. Currently, the YMCA will cost $450 a week for two kids who attend their program in the fall, a program that is tailored to the Worcester Public Schools, not Holden. Otherwise, our kids would not get the education they need. Fiable options for care so that our children can participate in the education at the same level as their peers, whose parents are home. Start the school year, the start of the school year is five weeks away, and based on email exchange with Mrs. Morano from Holden Rec, as well as other childcare facilities in Holden, no or very limited discussions of alternative programs have been had with the WRSD. I ask, how can any of you vote to provide remote learning without considering the needs of kids who will be put at a disadvantage by your vote and recommendations? Essential workers and working parents need options so we can continue to provide our community with services while our children can get their education." Next tonight, from Amanda Taylor. "Hello, I have an incoming kindergartner, and we're planning on doing a learning pod with one other family. It seems like a lot of people are trying to use this option. Will there be any kind of consistency of curricula within the grades across classrooms? We'd like our kids to learn together, but if they have different teachers with different curricula, it will make it more difficult." Next tonight, from Timothy and Kristy Carlson. "Parents were asked to comment on the survey about transportation and school cafeteria services when considering a reopening plan. These are two areas that many are willing to sacrifice in favor of and minimal hybrid learning. At present, our kids see no hope of returning to the classroom. Please consider, if you haven't already, having teachers conduct remote sessions from their classroom. The optics for students seeing their teachers teach in a classroom setting are much more conducive to learning. An option for families to opt out for either remote or hybrid learning. Factor in the percentage of families who responded to the survey saying their student, their children would not return in person. Phase in hybrid learning. First few weeks of school can only be remote to allow students remotely meet teachers, gain an understanding of course curricula, and allow more time to address logistics of moving humans in and out of schools, then begin phasing slowly in October. It takes a village. Many of us are willing to volunteer time and effort in support of in-person instruction. Please tell us how we can help." Next tonight, comes from Michelle Greewall. "The Special Education Parent Council is committed to supporting the families of our district. We understand the extended support needed for these families at this time. Many families are going without specialized services and only have access to them via in-person sessions. We appreciate the support and statements made by our school committee members during the last meeting with regards to our call for more specific time and information. In all matters, we ask the WRSD administration to continue to provide transparent timelines for when more information will be available and to consider all creative solutions to ensure services that can be provided as soon as possible. We're committed to partnering with WRSD administration, parents, and our union partners to keep communication flowing. To that effect, CPAC is hosting a special meeting this Thursday via Zoom at 6:30 PM and have invited Special Ed Chair, Special Ed Director Christine Smith and reps from the teachers and aid unions to attend to offer a statement. We invite you to attend, and thank you for your continued support." Finally, tonight. "Hi, my name is Sophie Unfrich. Sorry about the pronunciation there, Sophie. I'm a seventh-grade student at CTMS. I was writing because I have a suggestion for next year. Since we're remote for the fall, I was wondering if it would be considered to keep the same classes and teachers together for next year? I believe that it would make the year go much smoother, as all the classes would already know each other, and then the teachers would already know the students." From Sophie. And I think that's a good place to end tonight. To members of the public, we do have a second public comment session, so if you do proceed with questions throughout the course of this meeting, we will ensure the meeting does not end before your comments are heard at the, at the close of our meeting tonight. Next on the agenda tonight is the chair's opening remarks, and I have a few. So I wanted to say good evening to everybody tonight. Tonight, we gather again in our pursuit to develop a reopening plan that provides for two things. First, safety for our students and our staff, and second, educational opportunities that provide our students with the tools to achieve their dreams. To my school committee members, we will again hear from many members of our community, many you've already just heard from, that will come to the table with a diverse set of experiences, but all work to the same aim, to ensure that the education of their child in a plan that gives them the flexibility to work and put food on the table. Thus again, we need to listen. I also want to remind my fellow school committee members of the power of the open public meeting. It is here that our constituents are made aware of in advance of our agenda, have the power to offer official public commentary, and then to read our minutes when discussion is complete. So again, I am asking tonight that during the meeting time and after that, we respect very vehemently these open meeting laws in order to protect the rights of each and every one of our constituents to be whole, be heard in an open forum, not just on social media platforms. Please again refrain from using the chat for anything other than raising your hand tonight. And again, in the spirit of having all members be heard, please your, keep your comments to two minutes. If you're going over that time, I will respectfully ask you to wrap up to allow that all voices are heard tonight. With that being said, my favorite part of the evening, our student reps reports. Kenichi and Catherine, are you with us tonight?
Yes, we are. Hi, how's everyone doing tonight?
We're doing good. I love your energy.
I hope you're all well. So I have a quick report and then like three questions, so I'm so sorry to ask more questions.
No, you have your questions again. Part of the night, you're teaching.
Okay, so my first part of the report, first of all, right now, we're preparing for online, as you all know, and the high school's currently working on filling three positions. And then we just added a September SAT date, so that will give our seniors a better chance to get in those SAT dates before they can, get them in before they apply to college. And then the guidance head, department head, Mrs. Clark, just connected with all the seniors tonight and sent out their plan for how they will be helping seniors with the college process. With that being said, I do have three quick questions. So I've had a lot of people, and this goes along with a lot of the public comments, be concerned about the time on learning and how students will not be filling everything in the curriculum. So can you just reiterate how students will be prepared for the following years and how you guys are working that even with that short amount of learning time, that students will be ready for AP tests or whatever they're taking come fall or spring? And then my next one is, I've talked with a lot of the principals, and none of them know what the social emotional learning plan is for high school students. So if any of you know what that plan is and how we're going to be helping those students that are really struggling at this time, could you please share that with me? And then what's, are the students that missed MCAS, which, so sophomores and freshmen that were supposed to be taking their last MCAS this year, just taking them again in the spring? I might have missed this in the DCE report, so I'm sorry if I did, but could someone just clarify that for me? That's all I have, thank you.
I'm going to let Dr. McCall kind of answer those questions during his report or during the discussion. He may note those, and if he did not, I did.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Do you have anything to add tonight?
I don't. I guess mostly what I was thinking about, I'm not really allowed to say, and Catherine already said it, so.
All right, thank you. If you, if you come up with anything during the meeting, guys, I'm gonna make sure we get to you for questions. So just hang with me and I'll make sure you guys get circled around too.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. So that being said, we head over to the superintendent's report. Dr. McCall, I'm sure you have something you would like to highlight from your report.
I sure do. So welcome, everyone. Thank you for sitting in again on another remote meeting. It is still an interesting process for all of us, I think, going through this. And again, I feel as though, you know, Deputy Brelow and I were talking a little bit about this this morning, you know, having the opportunity for a lot of people to be able to view this. I think we probably have more people participating in our school committee meetings than we ever have in the past. So eventually somewhere down the road, when there's in-person meetings again, you know, we'll have to figure out a way that we can possibly continue to do this model using YouTube. And again, Barry Scler has been looking at that as well. So what I like to do right now is I'm gonna present the document that I shared earlier on with you today, and we're also going, that's getting posted to the website this evening as well. So there is a way for me to present just a tab. And just, are we all set there? I'm assuming we are. I'm just, I just see the screen. So again, this is the document that we have created that really kind of ties a lot of the stuff that we talked about last week together. And we have a table of contents that includes all of these items that we will review with you this evening. So again, there's an executive summary that we put together and really just talks about, you know, COVID and how it began and, you know, ultimately what it's done for all communities throughout the, throughout the world. And, you know, what we're, what we're trying to do to really address the issues associated with COVID and its impact on education. I then have a letter from the superintendent, and again, this is, you know, my letter going out to the community, letting people know where we're at and what our plans, you know, really are. And again, you know, we, we talked about this, we didn't talk about this, but you know, I've been talking about this all weekend with my staff, that, you know, we're, we're now in a position where the governor has scaled back some of his reopening plans. And as we start to move into that model, you know, that phase model, we thought we were going to keep going. So now it's, now it's been pulled back a little bit. And I think that helps, you know, us to kind of think about where we're at as a, as a school district, and I think many other school districts are doing the same thing. I've spent an awful lot of time talking with superintendents across the state about this. So one of the things we talked about last week was just the details associated with the remote plan and, you know, where, where, you know, we had the slides, but we didn't have the actual information there. So I know we shared a lot of this out with school committee over the weekend, so you could just take a look at it beforehand. But this talks about our remote plan, and what we've done is we've broken it into three different sections. So we have elementary, we have middle, we also have high school. So within each section of this document, by elementary, middle, and high, we have basically an overview. We talk about the components of an online lesson. So we really detail, okay, here's, here's what the lesson could be. And again, I think there were a lot of, you know, I've been trying to answer a lot of questions that have been coming our way around synchronous versus asynchronous, what will be made available, those types of things. And those are, those are items that we are literally, you know, working at, you know, defining even now. So one of the great things that we also have in here are just the goals associated with the different subject areas that, you know, kids will be participating in. So for elementary, we have math, ELA, social studies, and science. And, you know, those goals all tie back to what kind of the expectations are around where kids should be and what they should be able to do. We talked a little bit about attendance at our last meeting, and this is really important. We, we do want to ensure that children are in school. We have to, you know, report this back out to DESI. And, and this is especially important for October 1 counts and so forth. So, you know, that's something that we're gonna continue to do. For assignments, especially for the elementary level, what we're trying to do is not have too many assignments burden kids down. We, we heard a lot about that in the remote learning survey information that went out at the end of the year. Just the concerns around too much homework at different times and so forth. One of the questions that I think was posed a little earlier today was around, wow, you've got three hours of learning time in the morning, but it seems like it's just kind of open in the afternoon. Well, as we've looked at what the expectations are around having a student sit in front of a computer, it's, it's not feasible or reasonable to say, okay, you know what, we're gonna have this student literally sit in front of the computer for six and a half hours a day. It's, I don't know of very many adults who actually do that. And, I mean, unless, maybe there are more now than there used to be. But it's, it's very, it's a very different type of situation when you're sitting, paying attention to a class and learning and listening and trying to interact. So, you know, again, those are, those are items that we'll talk about as we go through the rest of this. We do have sections on grades. Kids will be graded. This is not a pass fail. It's, it's grades as they typically would get, excuse me. Student placement in remote teachers, with remote teachers, and again, they're, they're going to be for academic classes, related arts, support classes. And principals are going to be placing students based upon, you know, where they would, you know, really fit, in the same way they would do in, in person. We are gonna take into consideration, you know, in the hybrid model, you know, when transportation occurs, you know, where students live and siblings. These are two examples of daily student schedules that could occur at the elementary level. And again, if I, you know, it's a Monday morning, at 8:50, school starts, and there's a morning meeting time when you're bringing everyone together. 9:20 to 10:50 would be English Language Arts, a chance for kids to read, do some writing, work with a teacher. There could be a science time from 10:55 to 11:35, a lunch break. And then that afternoon time, that online help and support, that's really set aside for many different things, including support that would be given by the teacher directly to small groups of students, to individual students. Breaking down some of the exercises that occur in the morning could carry over into the afternoon. So what we were attempting to do is really give as many opportunities for teachers to have flexibility in terms of working with kids. Again, we can have the direct instruction model, which is what the expectation is. But I want to ensure that there's the opportunity for teachers and students to connect at a different level. When you're in the classroom and you have, you know, your 23 kids and you're walking around the desks or the groups, and you can kneel down and talk to a student for two, two minutes about something that's going on. And then, you know, move around to another student at the same pod or in the classroom. It's more challenging to do when you're, you're doing this remote. So we really want to utilize that afternoon time for that support. And, you know, another sample schedule is right underneath. And I won't have to go into that. We have expectations for our online classes. So having them meet through Google Meet, and it's really something that's expected, that they're all engaged in that on a daily basis. We know we really need to work closely with families. This is going to be a priority for us. Because again, I think ultimately having that support from the school will help the families be able to help students even more. We also have included a great deal of information pertaining to special education services and, you know, kind of the steps that, you know, we are actually taking to help support those students. Chris Smith actually put together quite a bit of information over the past several weeks. And we've been culling through it and really developing some of the different timelines and testing and plans that are really gonna be necessary in order to have the kids partake in what's going to go on remotely and ultimately in person. And as you kind of go through that first part, you get down to in-person special ed sessions and services. And really, our goal is to have students that really need the academic support or the, the, our high need students, and I think we, we talked about that last time, and there'll be more conversation, you know, I think right here in this part where we talk about high needs. But we hope to have them back into the building in some form or fashion by October 5th at the earliest. And again, this is where we've talked about, you know, transitioning, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. But, you know, we transition our students into some of the different in-person models. So it's really a phase in model, and, you know, we feel as though it is the safest way to do it. It's, I think it's a way that will help teachers feel more comfortable. It will help students feel more comfortable. We'll get them into a, a setting where there is a level of consistency. And I think ultimately, you know, a way in which students will have the ability to connect. One of the parents in one of the comments read earlier talked about having the opportunity to meet the teachers in, in person somewhere along the line before school starts. And that's something that's been in the back of my head, thinking how that might actually happen. So we then go into support services for ELE, for our English Language Learners. And ultimately, that's going to be provided in an online support system. One of the things that we're also doing is using that afternoon time. If there are students that require, you know, some type of support from an ELE tutor, teacher, however that works, that can actually occur, even though they can support them during, like a language arts time or a math time, they can also work with them in the afternoon during a smaller block or during, you know, in a small group. So those are the types of things that we want to ensure that we have the opportunity to provide to students. And it's also, you know, the extra help time. You know, again, those are going to be really important ultimately to make sure that teachers and students and families have the opportunity to connect. And we talked about meals. We've had, we had a really challenging time ultimately this, this spring, pulling things together. We ran and out of one building. I think our food service director did a fantastic job organizing everything out of the high school. And I think ultimately, we want to ensure that we're providing meals to all five communities, attempting to do it through their communities. There is some talk about combining Princeton and Sterling because of the smaller numbers, but we're still looking at how that might play out. But, you know, right now, we're looking at being able to provide meals for free and reduced, and also for people that would want to purchase them in at least four of the five towns. So moving forward, middle school, again, very similar information that we have in here in reference to online lessons and so forth. The goals also have some examples of some learning activities that could tie back to these goals specifically for the different subject areas. And as you go through, we also have after-science, world language. We have performing arts, which is music. We have visual arts, so art class, and also PE. And I'm just scrolling through attendance, assignments. Those are all items that we've talked about in the same way at elementary is going to be responsible, middle and high school are also responsible. This is an example of a middle school home, or a middle school plan for a week. So again, there's a homeroom, 8:45 to 9:00. You'd have three periods in that morning. And then you'd have online time in the afternoon. And again, that online time can be, and it can be small group. Someone's having, you know, an ELA support group. Okay, we're gonna pull these five kids together and, you know, we're gonna work on it. And tell you what, the teacher's available from 2:30 to 3:00. So anybody who wants to join in, join in, and we're gonna be focusing on, you know, talking about what was, you know, reviewed earlier. Those are the types of things that can occur at that time, as well as, you know, developing different ideas around what, what's going to, what's the projects are, what work is going to be done. Because that morning time, oftentimes, there will be a lot of discussion, discourse, and so forth. But a lot of the work is actually going to happen in the afternoon, especially with our middle and high school grades. So we have all of our, you know, similar expectations. We have our special education information that aligns with middle school. And again, same thing with our extra support for ELE, extra help and meals at the high school. Again, we have some of the information, and I know we, there were a couple of questions around high school and how, you know, we're gonna be able to prepare all the students. I can tell you, Principal Bando, the administration, the guidance office, they have been working diligently over the past several weeks. And Deputy Brelow can, can confirm this over and over again, the conversations that are happening around what is, you know, how things are gonna work, how our class is going to be broken down. What's the online component going to be in terms of supporting students, you know, in AP and the different subject areas? So it is a, it's, there's an awful lot of conversation, but I think there's an awful lot of support for one another at the high school level as they, you know, they're pulling all of this together. So again, we have online goals, or I'm sorry, goals around education for our different subjects, including math, English, social studies, science. We have world language, and also performing arts, visual arts, and physical education. So attendance, again, is mandatory. Assignments will continue, and I didn't mention this in the middle school, but we, you know, if you look right here, a teacher may assign work that could equal, equal up to 40 minutes of work between the time that they meet and then the time that they meet again. There's gonna be more work that kind of continues off and on. What we're, again, attempting to do is balance how much work the kids are actually doing. We don't want to underestimate what they can do, but we don't want to also overestimate and put too much of a burden on students in order to kind of have them be able to get the gist of what's going on in terms of their classes. So it's 40 minutes for high school. I didn't mention at the middle school level, it was 30 minutes, and elementary, it's 20. So we do have grades. We talked about student placement. This is an example of a daily schedule for a student. So we have all of our blocks in the morning, an activity period. And then, you know, I'll scroll down because it's kind of stopped there. We have a lunch, and then we actually go into online support for the afternoon. And again, those are going to be utilized in many different ways in terms of supporting students and giving extra, not only extra help, but also looking at how they can support groups of students, individual students, talk with families, have the opportunity for conversations. We have to provide that time. So we have expectations for online classes. And again, you know, we want to ensure that we're providing, you know, really kind of clear guidance around what the expectations are. We have family engagement. We have all of the information pertaining to special education. And we move down into the support services. Also ASR at the high school, so that's the academic support resource that, you know, we'll continue to provide. We're also looking at after-school clubs and activities, how those are going to play out. And they're actually working on how we're, we're attempting to do that right now. And then we have meals. So this is kind of the model for what a phased transition to a hybrid plan really is. So we start school September 16th remote, and then no sooner than October 5th, in-person sessions would begin for some preschool students. And then students with significant and complex needs is defined by their IEPs. So, you know, what we're, what we want to do is get those students into the school as soon as feasible and have them start working with their classroom teachers, individuals, specialists, and so forth. Phase two would be no sooner than October 26th. So it's really continuing phase one with, with students and making sure the frequency of sessions, it's up at least 50% of the time, which is identified by, through their IEP. And this would also have the beginning of in-person sessions for the rest of preschool. and students with moderate, moderate needs in terms of their IEPs. And also some other students that are defined high needs by DESE. So we want to ensure that we are providing those support services in person as best we can and as soon as possible. And then no sooner than November seventeenth for phase three. So we continue with phase one and phase two and, you know, again, increase the duration of the in-person sessions. And then ultimately, and it's interesting because I think this was mentioned a couple of times in our comments tonight, what we'd like to do is have a phased-in approach where students in kindergarten, first grade, sixth grade, but fifth grade and Sterling because of the way the, the Houghton and Chalks that are broken up, ninth grade and twelfth grade would start a hybrid instruction model, which would really be, you know, the precursor to implementing a hybrid learning model district-wide. So that really allows us to get those groups in. These are the, you know, kindergarten, first grade, we want to get those kids in as soon as possible. You know, when we're looking at sixth grade, those are the kids that are transitioning from middle school, from, excuse me, elementary to middle. That's a really important one, as well as the ninth graders and the twelfth graders. So when we're, you know, looking at all this, you know, ultimately, we also have kind of how we've defined, you know, what we're going to be doing and how it's going to work. And that is all within the confines of this next section. We talk about classrooms, how we'll screen students and staff. We talk about PPE, sanitizing and disinfecting, and also parent choice around selecting ongoing remote learning, participate in hybrid learning as we move through, move through the year. Now, we talked about our hybrid learning model quite a bit last week and, you know, this is just, this kind of defines what each section would look like. So, you know, we have elementary, middle and high school and we're looking at a certain number of students in a cohort. So we have two cohorts and each cohort would basically have two days of in-person school each week and then they would have three days of remote. So maybe on Monday, Tuesday and then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, remote. So in-person Monday, Tuesday, and then they would flip for the second half of the week. We have all of the same information that ties back to all of the different items that we would still need with a hybrid model that goes along with anything that's happening with in-person. We also have supporting our special education services, our medical waiting spaces, waiting room spaces. We've, you know, again, I like this terminology much better. Those are the spaces that would are, that are necessary if there is a suspected case of COVID and an adult or a student needs to be quarantined until they can either be picked up or they can drive themselves home. And we also talk about scheduled mask, mask breaks in that hybrid model, allowing kids to have the opportunity to take their masks off while having the solid six feet of distancing. Most likely, this will happen outside for the most part, but we still want to ensure that that there, that happens and that would be part of the schedule. Where, you know, in general, for lunches, students would eat in the cafeteria. There will probably be some cases where they have to eat in classrooms just because of the spacing and, you know, again, those are, those are things that we're defining. We talk about recess, our bathrooms, the restrooms, what will actually happen within those and what, what we want to ensure is there when students come in. This is, we talked about this last week in terms of transportation. This is the sample hybrid model in terms of, you know, Monday, Tuesday, in-person, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, remote. That Wednesday, again, is a combined short and remote teacher-directed instruction. In the afternoon on a Wednesday's would be used for K-12 collaboration across the board. And, you know, again, that's, that's a vital time for a hybrid model, remote model because this is still all so new to most people. So, you know, really when looking at this, you know, our summary is really around how we can do this and do it safely and effectively. So we put a target date of January fourth and that's, that's a target date of having full hybrid, all students in, in order to just make sure that we're able to finalize transportation issues, building issues readiness and really any, any health metrics that DESI puts forth. We did have a meeting with the commissioner last week. He's meeting again with us superintendents tomorrow at one. And one of the discussion points was around health metrics that DESI and DPH are looking at and how that can be defined. So I know there was a lot of conversation around metrics last week. Those, those aren't there. I talked to our boards of health today and they are, again, they're looking at it and saying, well, you know, there, there really aren't true metrics to, to kind of come back to. And we have the percentages. We talk about the, the two percent positive rate or the three percent, whatever, whatever those numbers might be, numbers might be, but, you know, those still aren't something that have, that has been defined. And, you know, ultimately, superintendents from across the state are looking for really more definition on that. And then we have the in-person plan and that's the, the full in-person, having kids back in, social distancing, you know, having everything that's in place. And again, this is in the same way, you know, all of these same items are, you know, what we have in our hybrid model as well. And then if we kind of go down, so student support and PD, again, we're using those first ten days of school for really developing, you know, helping teachers and, you know, other staff member better support all of the different things that are going on around remote learning and hybrid learning. And, you know, we're also looking at whether or not there would be the opportunity for students and teachers to make a connection beforehand. I think that would be really important. Someone brought that up in one of the comments today. The technology resources, you know, with the, you know, the knowledge that we, we know we're in a situation where we're going to need a lot of Chromebooks in kids' hands. We're expanding the Chromebook program, so our one-to-one program that we've put forth up at the high school into grades six through eight. So middle, middle school students will now have them in the same way that high school students do. So we are, they're ordered. There is a shortage ultimately of Chromebooks across the country and, you know, Barry is working diligently with our company on, you know, ensuring that they are here hopefully fairly soon. We do have Chromebooks in the schools in carts that if we need to, those will be loaned out first and then we would swap them out. And we also have the loan program. So anyone that needs a Chromebook, we can, we can put those out for families. And then also mobile hotspots. You know, I think there were some questions around not having access to Wi-Fi and so forth, what we've, we've purchased that. We purchased hotspots. Those will be made available to families that need them. The software, these are some of the different things. We have the G Suite Enterprise for Education and that's really the learning management system that's going to help provide, you know, kind of one-stop shopping. Barry, if you wanted, I don't know if you and/or Bob want to talk a little about these items?
Yeah, I can do that. So, you know, the first, the first item is the G Suite Enterprise for Education and it, there, there are a number of really important enhancements that Google's making to Google Meet in particular. Some of these in that last bullet, things that people have been looking for, for a long time, like hand raising and tile view for up to forty-nine attendees, those will, those will be available to all customers, but there are a number of premium features that are only available by purchasing their enterprise subscription, which we have done. And these features are all being rolled out. They, they say sometime in September and our, since our school year starts in the middle of September, hopefully we'll have most of these or all of these in place. But it includes attendance tracking, which is a big thing that teachers were looking for in the spring. Basically, a teacher holds a Google Meet session with their students. They, at the end of the meeting, will get an attendance report, who was in, for how long, when they came, when they went. So everything that, all the accountability that the teachers were hoping for in their video conferencing. Breakout rooms so that teachers could assign students to different small groups to work on, to collaborate on things together. Q and A and polling. So rather than just having an open chat thing, there'd be like a, we haven't seen these yet, so I can't describe them too well, but basically an interface where students can ask questions and have them answered. And polling where teachers can take some, you know, get a quick snapshot of whether or not everybody's kind of keeping up with what's being covered. Enhance moderator controls so the teacher will be able to mute everybody at once, lock the chat for everybody and lock it so that only the teacher can present, if that's what they want to do. These other features, up to two hundred and fifty participants, recording capabilities, dial-in access, we have those now, but they're, at, at the end of September, they're going to be discontinued for non-enterprise customers. That's something, those are features that Google's provided for free to schools during this time, but that is going away. And then another big one is the original, originality reports for classrooms. So teachers will be able to basically see if students are plagiarizing their assignments in Google Classroom. Another cool part of that original, originality reports is that they're, and I guess it's beta now, but they, but students will be able to see if their documents match. I don't think specifically other, other students by name, but whether or not they have content in their document that, that isn't particularly original and that could be from, you know, using similar web sources as someone else and not putting it into your own words. So some really cool features coming in, in G Suite. And I mentioned, we mentioned before, the Screencastify Unlimited. So that, that allows teachers to record either their screens or their webcam or a combination of both to basically record many instructions, instructional lessons using their, their computer. And those videos are saved directly to Google Drive and can be shared easily in classroom. The unlimited subscription, the free version of this only allows you to record five minutes, which isn't particularly helpful for teachers. But, so we bought it for all teachers, so they'll have the unlimited recording level and then additional editing tools. CSO, we're, we're still in the midst of getting, getting that contract and PO together, but for pre-k to two students, they'll have CSO as a classroom management platform rather than Google, Google Classroom because it's just, we've gotten some feedback from some teachers on this and it's just a nicer environment for younger students and a, and a simpler interface and better tailored to their, their type of content. Lexia has been purchased for all lower elementary grades, so every school will have access to that reading program. Sora Library, a free collection of online books and eBooks. That's already set up, so district-wide, we'll, we'll provide these links obviously before school starts, but all staff and students with their WSE accounts can log into the Sora Free Library. Edulastic, there's just a few other, I don't have to get into each one of these, but Edulastic Styromath actively learn, just additional online platforms to provide curriculum and instruction.
Great, thank you Barry. And then, oh yeah, go ahead Bob.
The only thing I'd like to add is this is just a snapshot in time and that's true for this document as a whole. This is where we are today and people should expect this to be enhanced as we move along. So as of today, those are the platforms we have. We're still looking at additional things. Some teachers have given us feedback on certain things. We're still looking into those, so you should expect this list to grow.
Thanks Bob. And, you know, he's exactly right, you know, when we're looking at this, we want this to be a document that is, you know, this is a baseline and then we expand from here. And then, you know, ultimately support, you know, we talked a little bit about this earlier, you're really having resources there and training for staff so that they're, they're ready to go. And then families, Barry is putting together a new website, really a place where everything is kind of together, all the online resources and so forth for families. And then, you know, we have our finally, you know, the health and safety requirements and these, these are all the, the guides that have been shared from DESE in reference to reopening. So that is the, the plan and thank you for being patient as I reviewed everything.
Thank you so much, Dr. McCall. I'm going to turn pretty quickly to school committee member questions and comments. I didn't want to make note of a couple public comments that came in during your presentation that they could not see your screen. So if that could be posted to the website as soon as possible for them to view, it'd be appreciated.
Sure.
Thank you. In my effort to keep mixing up who goes first tonight, I feel like I need to start pulling it out of a hat like it was the winning of the lottery. I'm trying to get to different people every week. So I'm going to start actually with member Haber tonight. You're the winner of the big lottery.
I wasn't prepared to go first with my button. Okay. So my first question, under components of online lessons, it says that direct instruction may include teacher-made or found video. And I just want to confirm that at some point during each classroom period, there will be some live instruction. Is that true?
That would be the goal, definitely. You know, we have had some conversation, you know, and I think you've heard this as well. We've had some families concerned around the synchronous versus asynchronous because of schedules. So we're looking at how that can play out. And again, I think that's one of the reasons why having the opportunity for teachers to record lessons. So there's the live part, but if there's a student that can't be there, they're sick, something else is going on, the, the recording that can be reviewed later on. And then there's access to it.
Right. I just, I was hoping that the, that live portion would be then recorded for those other students. Okay. Every person I've talked to is concerned about that afternoon block, me included. I see it working well at the elementary level when you have one teacher working with a group of kids and they can, you know, divide their own time. My concern is when you hit high school and you now have a three-hour block, two and a half hour block, where you have, you know, three, four different teachers who are trying to share that same amount of time. You know, if the math teacher wants to have small breakouts and the science teacher wants to do extra help and the English teacher wants to, you know, go over some certain reading, how is that all getting organized so that they're sharing that time? I just don't, I just don't see how that works. The other thing about that is that at some point when we go hybrid and some kids are still remote, how does that shift? I don't understand how that shifts over to a model where we have some kids still remote and some kids hybrid.
Yes. So shifting from hybrid to remote, so I, ultimately, what's going to happen is we will have, we're going to have students who are remote all year long. They will, you know, families aren't comfortable sending the kids in. There, you know, there could be some major health issues associated with the student, however it might work, or someone at home, they don't want to take a risk. So there will be students who will be working remotely all year long anyway. I think the, hopefully the shift and it's, you know, going from in-person or I'm sorry, going from, transitioning from remote to hybrid, I think that's really going to be the part where kids will have had the opportunity to have, you know, the, the understanding how, how to use all the different modes of communication that they're going to be using during this remote time. And then as they move into the hybrid model, you'll still have some kids who are continuing to do the remote and that's going to be the part that as we kind of break this down, how those kids are broken up in, in classrooms, that's going to be a really important part. So as we move forward and we look at class, you know, how classes are made up, you know, how they're composed, you know, we'll look at whether or not families are going to say, you know what, we're going full remote, we don't want to do it. Or, yeah, I, you know, we're doing remote now, but we want to jump into hybrid. We're, we're going to have to define some of those things for families because again, I don't want there to be too, you know, I don't want it to be so wishy-washy that, you know, there's going to be, I want to do remote now, let's do hybrid and I, I want to do remote again, so.
I, I do understand what you're saying, but I don't think you maybe, you didn't quite answer my question, so I'm not sure if we're on the same page. I guess I'm saying, so if a teacher, let's say, is teaching math at a high school level or middle school level, where you have a math teacher at section A and then you have science and then you have English and then you have the afternoon of open. And then when we are in a hybrid model in January or whenever, and are those same teachers teaching the hybrid model and the remote model?
So that's one of the things that they're going to be looking at is having that model divided up because what is going to happen is that you're going to have only half the number of kids. So the thought is having the opportunity for the students who are remote to either participate in the synchronous part of what might be going on during that, that lesson or the lesson is taped and they watch it after. But we, you know, we're not going to be able to go back and forth. But we, you know, we're not going to be able to go back and forth between moving students from one teacher to another to another. So we're really going to try to develop a consistent model associated with that.
Okay. Daryl, if I could just add in here. Jerry, when we go full hybrid, let's say that that January 4th date happens and as of January 4th, we're fully hybrid. We fully expect that there would be different schedules for kids that they'd receive once they come into school and now that's their day. Then it wouldn't be the same schedule as what you're seeing here for the remote model.
Okay. To move on, I know our buildings are not ready yet. I would like to see a plan with a list of things that need to be complete. Partitions need to be put up, hand sanitizer stations need to be put in place. I understand there's a ton of little things that need to get done. I would like to see where we are in that list and I would like to see deadlines and who's responsible for each of those items. My last thing is hybrid phasing. I understand that it needs to go with our most vulnerable first and our youngest kids first. I completely understand and agree with that. But when you move into K1, I don't have them in front of me. K1, 6, 9, and 12, I don't understand completely why we're going there. I do understand that is great for freshmen to get in, for that sixth graders to get into their classrooms. But from a logistical standpoint, from families, it just seems like a nightmare. You know, you can have your first and second graders and one's going to school and the other one's not. You have a ninth grader and a fourth grader and your ninth grader is going to watch your fourth grader. Well, you can't anymore because your ninth grader is going to be in school. From a babysitting standpoint, whatever else, I just don't see how that's realistic. I appreciate it. Okay.
Next up tonight is member Haynes.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, thank you all for the plans, appreciate those. I was thinking about all this tonight and going into remote learning. And I was talking to Daryl a few days ago and I just, I was remembering back in March. It was March 12th, I believe. Daryl made the call to close our schools and that was days before the state did. And I thought that was a bold move. I thought it was the right move. I thought it took courage and real leadership to do that. And I'm glad, I'm grateful that he did it. And as we sit here today, I see the same guy in the same seat and he's leaning on the same principle that he did back then, which is an overriding concern for people's safety. And for all the headaches that have come since that date, as a dad, that is something that I think about more than anything else. And so I appreciate the concern for safety. I appreciate it now as I did then. As, as we're going forward with this remote, I keep hearing, not just here, but around the world actually, people using these, the group concept, small group concept. Sometimes it's kids, sometimes it's kids with a teacher. But the small group concept online as a part of this remote learning and that seems to be successful in places that have already started back to school in this, in this method. So that definitely something to keep looking at. I am happy to hear that we are trying to get toward the hybrid model. I think that's, I think that's a noble goal because we all agree that in-person teaching is superior. I don't think there's any, in case anyone's wondering, I don't think there's any mystery. We understand in-person is better. And I'm glad to hear that we're trying to get there, we're just trying to do it right. I would say, let's not make hybrid a, you know, a 50-50 or nothing choice. That would be kind of a false choice. Let's not just say it has to be 50-50 or nothing. Because if we can look at it in smaller groups, a smaller percentage of kids at a time, that might be the way to do it for a variety of reasons, including achieving the six feet of spacing in all the classrooms, not just some, but in all the classrooms. That would help with, for example, if we have to do lunches in the classroom when the masks come off or a mask break where we're supposed to have that six-footed distance. If we, you know, go with smaller groups of kids, that might be easier to manage. Not to mention, we won't have to worry about extra buses. The list goes on. So I just, I just didn't want it to become 50-50 or nothing. That's all, that's all I got. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much, member Haynes. You actually went on two minutes on the dot. I don't know if you have stopwatch with you tonight.
No, I'm just, I'm just good.
You're just that good. Member Amber, are you with us tonight Bob?
Megan, Bob is absent tonight.
Okay. So no Bob, so we go to member Christian Ball.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate the district's administration steps in developing a more detailed plan for the remote learning model, as well as the hybrid and full in-person learning model. I hope that the community will come to better understand via greater communication from the district that this remote plan is not a repeat of the remote learning plan we had last spring. But that based on safety benchmarks and facility capacity, hybrid learning and full in-person learning models were not feasible nor appropriate at this time. However, I feel like we need a little more greater clarity on four components of the plan. Some of them are not actual components, but, but questions on have we thought about this? So first of all, I think we need greater clarity on the structuring and scheduling of the afternoon sessions. I know it's been said, but I'd just like to reiterate that. How we, number two, how we might minimize transitions to new teachers and new schedules when the transition to hybrid does occur. You know, while we might have students who stay remote full year, we may also require to make accommodations for teachers who need to stay full remote all year. And so how are we going to make, make that kind of a hybrid situation work? I'd like to see greater clarity on that. How might we improve the time on learning requirements? I know we've heard that from public comments. I still remain concerned about that and I'd like to see if we could find some alternatives to try to up those numbers. And then how we might capitalize on this idea that's, that's been floated about small pods, learning labs or mentor teacher type models within our hybrid model. I think that that's an opportunity to explore there a little bit further. So I appreciate your diligence and commitment to this. I know it's not easy, there's no easy choices and decisions, but, but those are my thoughts there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, member Christian Ball. Member La Boy, you're up.
All right, I have a few concerns about the plan. The first being the instructional hours. We as a school committee and Dr. McCall was adamant about the number of instructional hours when we talked about converting a half a day kindergarten to a full day and the impact that it had on education with only a half a day of hours. And that's what we're essentially looking at for those instructional hours. And I do want to call out Dr. McCall, you responded to the member of the public that mentioned that. That member of the public is actually a former school committee member. So I think he knows a lot about operations of a district, so I just wanted to point that out. The second piece that I didn't see in the plan is how instruction will happen. Teachers in classrooms are an essential part to be able to transition to a hybrid model. They're also an essential part to allow staff to be in a place where they work best. We wouldn't ask an artist to not perform in their studio. We wouldn't ask a baseball player to not show up at a stadium and do their drills inside of a gymnasium. It also provides us with an opportunity to leverage teachers that are doing remote instruction well and be able to help those who are not. I'm also very concerned about the social and emotional learning plan, which I didn't see at all in there. Members of this committee, including myself, had mentioned to you, we were concerned when you put the director of social and emotional learning in charge of a 36-member task force to reopen the school. And I think in hindsight, the advice that the committee tried to convey, that social emotional needs were paramount, still is a concern. I also have a concern about the comments about the Chromebook shortage in knowing that Chrome cards are still have Chromebooks in it. In March, we had asked for an inventory of those and for the district to identify missing needs. I think that was an opportunity that the district could have saved money rather than spend money on new Chromebooks. And I want to go back to the question as to why remote? And all along, you had led this school committee to say that Commissioner O'Reilly's pushing us towards hybrid. You even mentioned in the special school committee meeting that you felt hybrid was the right solution. But your two words that you used were, it was too difficult when you started to get into that. And I just want to remind this committee that DESI has provided guidance that it would only be feasible to not do a hybrid model and go full remote if it's financially not viable. And we as a school committee, the public has not seen anything pertaining to the financial reasons to it. Lastly, I just want to call out what I've witnessed as a school committee member. Many members of the public have emailed the entire school committee, including yourself. I have not seen a reply off from you to anybody who's been critical of this plan. I haven't seen a reply. But last night, you chose to reply to two people with, I couldn't agree more, that backed your plan. I think that's a disservice to this deliberating body. One of those people you replied to was actually a family member of a member of this school committee. I think you did a huge disservice by not responding to other people that were more critical, that mentioned information. You should really take a step back and look in the mirror. The other thing is. Wrap up with one more point. A member of this body being a student rep asked last week if seniors could meet staff. And you said no, you shook your head immediately without listening. And now because people have emailed you about that, you're now, it's in the back burner. That should be the worst thing that you think of is that students are providing a successful, safe environment.
Thank you, member La Boy. Dr. McCall, do you have any comments on that?
You know, I appreciate mass, you know, comments. There were an awful lot there. And, you know, we, we do our best to try to respond when we can to these things. I understand the frustration on many people's minds around, you know, what's going on. And I also know that, you know, when we're looking at what we're, what we're trying to do, we're trying to do this in a, in a safe manner, you know, ultimately for teachers and for, and for students.
Thank you. Member Long Balia. Linda, you're up.
Sorry, I'm having a lot of computer problems tonight, I'm sorry. And so, and I may have missed Daryl's introductory remarks. So if I, if I cover something that he already mentioned, please forgive me for that. So, all right, so. I want to thank the administration for all the hard work putting this plan together. I'm glad to see that after starting remote, the plan now includes an explicit transition to a hybrid model with the ultimate goal of implementing a full in-person plan later in the year if possible. I can see a certain amount of sense in starting off remote so that we can establish a strong remote system and that will service in good stead at any point during the school year, even when we go hybrid, should we need to revert back to a remote plan. That said, I had some concerns. First, I was concerned about the lack of structure in the afternoon. Those kids have, you know, three hours or so where they, they may be able to talk to teachers. They may be able to get some other support. But I can tell you that when I, when I showed the draft schedule to my rising 10th grader, his comment was, cool, I have the afternoon off. And I'm concerned that a lot of young people will have that kind of reaction and that it might be better to have longer periods of time between classes in the morning and then hold one of the classes that's scheduled for the morning in the afternoon just to keep the kids focused on school for a longer period during the day. I also was wondering what was meant by the activity period for the high school students in the afternoon. I'd be interested to hear what, what that is supposed to look like. Last, but definitely not least, in phase three, we bring back select groups of elementary school students. And I wondered, why can't we bring back all of the elementary school kids? All, I understand that there are certain years, kindergarten and first grade, that perhaps are even more vulnerable than, than others. But I think all elementary school kids are, are very much in need of in-person learning. And so I'd like to see, I'd like to understand, I'd like to see us bring more of those elementary school kids in if we, if we possibly can. And lastly, I should also say, I'm glad to see some emphasis on bringing in some of the high-needs kids in special education. I think that's very, very important. And I would just urge us to continue trying to bring those kids in as, as early as we can because they are truly the neediest. So, so those are my questions and concerns at this moment.
So Bob, do you want to talk a little about the high school?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So that, that time that we have in the high school for the activity period you referred to, Linda, that times there is for smaller groups of students to connect with an adult there. So it might be similar to, maybe I'm a math teacher, but I don't just now connect with my math teacher. My math students are now connecting with just a group of students that are assigned to me just to find out, are they having any problems, how's it going? And they knowing that I'm the sort of the person they could go to if they're having any sort of trouble or issue. It's not necessarily a teaching block per se, but it is something where people can check in with students. And we thought that was very important to put in there. The thing with the afternoon and maybe your son, what, what he said, we, we do have expectations for the afternoon. So in the class periods that happen in the morning where we're at, there's assignments that are created and given to kids. And then in the afternoon is where we support the students as they work through that. We can provide them with feedback in real time as they're working on these lessons. So it's not just an off period, a period where nothing's going to happen. I would say also in, in terms of the high school and creating this schedule as we pulled it together, there's also the opportunity for students to develop. And there's one period that happens during the week where they can work on independent learning. This is something that the Department of Ed has kind of asked us to put in there. And I'm kind of excited about that block being embedded in the high school on one of the days that are there. Did I miss anything, Linda, from your high school?
Yes, well, for the high school, well, I guess, I understand that they're supposed to work on homework or tasks, lessons in the afternoon. But I mean, how is that going to be, I mean, is it going to, is it going to be due the next day before the beginning of class? How is that going to work just to, just to keep them focused?
Sure. So Linda, in terms of maybe if you were to look at the high school schedule, I believe A block meets Monday and then again Tuesday, but C block meets Monday and then again Wednesday, for instance. So it'll be for the next time that they meet. So in some cases, you might have that, that back-to-back day. In other cases, you might have a day in between, but now you're getting other assignments from other teachers that next day. So it's about helping students to sort of learn those, how to manage their workload. And that's another thing that we would be hoping to be able to discuss and give some advice to students during this activity period. It's not just strictly about academics. We need to provide some social emotional support. There's opportunities for guidance to interact with kids during this afternoon, afternoon periods as well. And they were very excited about that. It's also an opportunity to check in with kids and help them to learn about learning because now that we're remote, the teacher isn't in front of them sort of visually checking up to, to see how they're doing all the time, so.
Okay, all right. I still have some concerns about it, but I'm keeping an open mind. But at elementary schools, why can't we keep the, get the kids in? Why can't we get all the elementary school kids in?
So we absolutely can do that. What we're trying to do is to bring in populations of kids as we open the doors a little wider. And so in other words, as we invite more kids into the school to see how it's working. We could have gone with just a two-phase plan where we're, we're doing this as we move from being remote to being hybrid. We could have just had two phases rather than three and brought everybody in on, on phase two. But we felt it was important to bring in, these are beyond the most vulnerable populations. If you step back, these are, were identified by the principals as the kids they want to bring in first to try to work through some of their learning needs. To learn the building layout, to get used to where they're going to have food in the cafeteria and how the building runs so as they move into the middle school. And for K and one, it's to be able to work more concretely face-to-face with them as we teach them reading skills and writing skills. That was there in terms of the high school. Once again, the feeling was by the principal that grade nine students, you have to get them in and it would be best if all the other students weren't in as they learn this, the building. And also that grade 12 students had sort of some unique needs and it was important to get them in and to be able to deliver some of these things to them.
Right. I understand prioritizing the ninth and 12th graders. I just still think that it would be better to get as many of the elementary school kids in as possible. And now I know my time is up.
Sorry to be calling people off tonight, but I'm hoping to get everybody in, plus our student reps. Member Mills?
Okay, so quickly, one, curriculum. There are going to be changes to our curriculum that I think we should be seeing and approving, particularly, you know, the music and athletics, you know, physical education. Clearly, they're going to be delivered differently, so I'd like to see that because we, as a committee, should own the curriculum. Secondly, I'm not as concerned about where the teachers teach from, but I care that there's observations occurring so that the administration of the schools is seeing what's going on in the classroom and also that appropriate PD is given because going to remote is going to be a lot of new things for faculty. I know I'm doing it too in higher ed. Third, again, I echo very much the idea of structure to the office hours. Teaching in higher ed, I'll say, kids do not know how to use office hours in college. They use them poorly. They use them infrequently. I think that, and they need to be trained how to use them. To think that a fourth grader or a ninth grader is going to use office hours effectively without structure, I think is a fantasy. So I think what we need to do is, they don't have to be sitting in front of the Zoom the whole time staring at the screen. There needs to be some structure. These 20 minutes, your math teacher will be here for you, and I expect you to be there to at least check in, all right? Because otherwise, they will do nothing. They'll either be intimidated, or they'll be scared, or they will not care enough, whatever. It's a lot of different reasons kids use office hours poorly, but even in college, they do. Next, SEL. Make sure that you really think about activities, giving kids like a Zoom framework or Google Meets, whatever we're using framework, to have their clubs meet with teachers helping them. Don't throw out the bath rotor on athletics. I mean, I doubt MIAA will let there be competitions, but if there can be practices or whatever, something to get the kids some outlet. Because a lot of kids, they care about school, but they care about school because... dot-dot-dot, and we can't lose focus on the dot-dot-dot. Finally, soon, get out a bus survey. Find out when we go hybrid, who's going to use the bus so that we're not using transportation as an excuse when nobody is going to actually use the bus potentially. So please be thinking about that.
Thank you so much, Member Mills. Member Mitchell?
Yes, thank you. I will try to make this short and sweet as well. I think as we've looked at the various plans for the school committee as well as--
I didn't say, mm-hmm.
Oh, Linda, you may want to mute yourself.
Why, did you hear too much?
Linda, Linda, you're unmuted.
Oh, so sorry.
Okay. The highest priority, I believe, is the students, teachers, and community safety. And I believe this plan puts us on the right direction for that. I believe there's still a lot of work regarding the next order of details, specifically related to both schedules and curriculum. And I think a key part to bringing that together is as the teachers come back. And I look forward to seeing that in future committee meetings. The other, I want to second the statement regarding the outline working for the buildings. I think, you know, if we plan to go back to a hybrid model, we need to make sure that all the points that we put together, that the administration has put together, are met and met within enough time that they could be reviewed and approved. And then finally, the one concern I have, as we've talked about, is the requirement for attendance. I know a lot of people have voiced their concerns as it relates to synchronous learning schedules. And it seems like there'll be, these attendance will affect both the individual student as well as our funding for next year. So I think we need to find something that will allow, give families the flexibility to have attendance even if they can't meet the synchronous schedule because as we've heard from a lot of parents and a lot of the community, that people are going to have to find creative ways to manage through this initial remote start. And I think if we have to expect people to have to log in at a specific time, we're probably going to do ourselves, both the children and the community, a disservice. That's it.
Did a great job. One minute forty-five.
And then, that was actually one of the questions that I was going to pose to the commissioner tomorrow in reference to the attendance and, you know, synchronous, asynchronous, and how we can actually count that.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. McCall, if you get that feedback tomorrow, would you mind emailing the committee with the answer you got? Thank you. Member Ottmar?
All right, thank you. So certainly, as we're diving into and getting a closer look at our plan here, it takes me back to an old military planning axiom that you don't let perfect be the enemy of good. And some people look at this plan and say it's not aggressive enough. Others may look and see it's too aggressive. And I think it's a good plan. It gives us something so that we can start moving, we can start to get things moving for our teachers, for our staff, and for our families as well, in an expectation of what we're going to be starting with for this school year. Again, being able to dedicate time for training our staff for synchronous DL because regardless of what we planned for, if there's a coronavirus huge spike in Massachusetts, then Governor Baker's going to take that decision out of our hands and put us back to remote. And if we're not prepared to do remote, if we don't have the opportunity to practice remote at the beginning of the school year to be really good at it, then we get kicked back to remote and then it's looking just like March, and nobody wants that. We can't have a repeat of that. So we need to get moving on this, make sure that we get it right, and that we've always got it as our backup in case coronavirus decides to do its own things. The delay to start into hybrid as well gives us an advantage in that we have some districts, some surrounding districts are going remote as we are. Others are jumping right into hybrid. The districts that are jumping right into hybrid, it gives us an opportunity because they're choosing to do that experimentation with their children's safety and their staff's safety. But we can learn lessons from them in terms of what works in schools for them. We can build off of their lessons. And so that gives, it gives us an opportunity to ensure that our processes are safe for everyone as well. And then finally, it gives our legislators a chance to possibly revisit, kind of do something similar to MCAS for Chapter Seventy-One, Section Sixteen-C, to allow, possibly allow a waiver to that state law so that we could relook how we do our transportation allocations. That legislative action would be needed, and so it gives us time for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think there's actually a bill in front of the legislature right now on that matter. Member Shapiro?
A lot of good things have been said so far. I just want to say, you know, thank you, Dr. McCall, and everyone in the administration who did the hard work on detailing this remote plan. It was interesting to see that the concerns that's on many, that's on so many people's minds over the last couple of weeks have been addressed in this plan. I also do understand that this was a focus of a remote plan, and the details of the hybrid plan have not been completely worked out. So I would expect that to be our conversation over the next couple of weeks as we look to transition, is to really kind of focus then on the hybrid and how that's really going to work. Another member asked for the more information about the social-emotional plan to be added to the plan. I didn't really see too much of that, and I would like to see more of that. Mentioned ideas of clubs or how musics can go. You know, echoing again, I know for my son specifically, some of those classes were the only reason why he went to school. And one of the parent emails addressed one of my suggestions also, was to let parents know as soon as possible what their teacher's assignments were so that they can begin to create, as the email said, a learning pod. I'm also thinking social groups and parent support groups as well, you know? So there's been a lot of talk around that. I think parents are, okay, you know, it might not be the best plan, might not be what I have chosen, but now that we know the plan, we can move forward. And now the next step is, how can we act on this for our children? And I think that knowing their teacher's assignments would really, really help with those parents. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Member Shapiro. Member Silva?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to thank the administration. A lot of the questions that I had were answered by this report, but it does rise some more other questions. I am concerned, like it was mentioned before, the instructional hours, you know, as was outlined by one of the comments, that we are losing like several hours of actual instruction time for our children. I'd like to see some more structure around that per-grade level or whatever it may be to make sure that our kids are getting the actual instruction for their grade level. I know you had mentioned that our goal was going to be the major concepts. And I'm a little bit concerned, like many parents are, if other people are doing hybrid and they're getting face-to-face instruction time on a regular kind of school day, full school day schedule, how are our kids going to compare when it comes to the actual instruction compared to the standards? Are we going to be at the same standards as everyone else in Massachusetts? Another thing is the small groups with the kids for breakout rooms. I work too. I work remotely all the time. I know these breakout rooms. My only concern would be, who's watching these particular breakout rooms? Because it just gives another avenue of bullying, you know, comments that are not appropriate. Who's watching these breakout rooms? Are we going to have a way where we're going to have some sort of recording or something transcript? Or is a teacher able to see these breakout rooms and monitor them? Because the last thing I want to have is that we're going remote, but it also raises all these new opportunities for kids to bully each other and not get caught. My other concern would be is, you know, there was mention of these small kids, you know, pods, little instructional pods and like groups that are being created. The last thing I want to see, especially after all the student comments that we have received in the last couple of months about discrimination, ignoring, I would hate to see a student say, "I didn't get enough time. I didn't get my answers, you know, answered. I didn't get the actual attention that I needed," for whatever reason. And they may perceive it as discrimination, or it may be discrimination. But how are we addressing that? Are we talking about that? The other thing is, I was a little confused. You guys said that when we transitioned to hybrid, the schedule won't be the same as remote. So what does that mean? So if everyone is remote and they're getting X teachers, does that mean if they choose to do the hybrid come January, they change teachers? Or are we doing it so that the teachers are taping their classrooms so that remote and hybrid are kind of experiencing the same experience as much as possible? Or are they getting a whole different, you know, schedule? So I was a little confused at that answer. And I think that is it for now, and I don't want to go over my time. Did I beat everyone else?
You're doing great, and I see Dr. McCall nodding, so I think he has an answer for you.
So, yeah, Asma, those are great points. And, you know, I think when we talk about the breakout rooms, that's exactly, you know, something that was, you know, already on our minds about, okay, how we end up, you know, ensuring that it's not a place where kids can take out their frustrations on one another, or make fun of one another, or bully one another. So, you know, we're also looking at how we can really utilize our paraprofessional staff. We have close to 200 paraprofessionals in our district, and they do different things during the day. They help support students on IEDs, but they also help in other ways. So having those people have the opportunity to be in with groups of kids is probably one of the ways in which we'll look at this. You know, in terms of the last question that you asked, you know, in reference to how that model would work out, we're looking to try to keep those models the exact, so it would be the same, so there wouldn't be that fluctuation.
Okay, thank you. And what about in terms of instructional, like major concepts versus how everyone else in the state is? If they're doing hybrid, they're getting more quote-unquote instructional face-to-face time with their teachers?
So, yeah, you know what? So I did say concept, major concepts. I really probably shouldn't use that terminology. We're looking at providing the, you know, the full curriculum, you know, as much as humanly possible. That's what they're looking at, at all the different levels right now. How we kind of divide this up, how assignments are set up so that we're not, you know, again, it's not the exact same thing as the in-person model, but an AP class is an AP class. We want to make sure that we make sure that, we want to cover the information that has to get covered. And, you know, Bob and I just, you know, we had back and forth about that today. You know, make sure that we are covering what we are supposed to cover.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Member Silva. Member Smith?
Thank you. Dr. McCall, Deputy Superintendent Burlow, and all others that have been working on these plans, thank you for your continued work. And we know this isn't easy, as has been mentioned. Your continued focus on health and safety is much appreciated. As mentioned, I do think we need to find a balance for our families' ability to assist their children with remote learning. We are hearing a desire from the public and from the committee for real-time learning, but we're also hearing a need for recorded lessons for families. As a teacher myself, the interaction with students is absolutely essential and critical to building relationships and engaging students in learning and informative assessment and to help inform my instruction. So that real-time interaction is really important in learning, and it can't be replaced by a recording. So we have to find a way to somehow balance this. So not having real-time learning is problematic. And I wonder if there, if we can do some more thinking outside of the box. This is not a typical situation we find ourselves in. And I wonder if there's a possibility of offering instruction at different times of the day. For example, maybe there are teachers who would be interested in afternoon or evening teaching. And if we can somehow find the families that need that, then we have solved a problem because there are teachers who have young children at home that might find it problematic to be teaching their children at the same time. So you might actually have a pool of teachers in a school, an elementary school or middle school, who would be willing to take an afternoon or evening shift and so that they can accommodate families. So just think outside of the box with that. And I think that might be a solution for some families. With, and I know it's atypical, but again, we're not in a typical situation.
Christina, you accidentally muted yourself.
Oh, gosh. So I think we need to be flexible for, thank you, for our families and for teachers, and we might just find something that works there. We know attendance is necessary. You've already addressed. I'm so glad you're having that call tomorrow so we can find out that answer because that would, this hinges on that idea of when we need to take attendance during the day. And if the commissioner isn't flexible, shame on him, actually, because we're in a strange situation and we need that flexibility. So I hope superintendents will call the commissioner out if he says it can only be during the day, like a typical school day, because there's nothing about this that is typical. And I know, Daryl, that you would say that, but just all these superintendents getting together. I would like something more of a high school, a high school schedule that more closely resembles a high school schedule. We're hearing that from a lot of members. That afternoon support time is not, I agree with the members who've talked about it, not being utilized. It won't be. It will be wasted learning time. And we're going to have a challenge enough for children to do the learning they need to do. So I think Member Longbalel had a great idea with like, maybe making a little break in between the classes a little longer so we can have afternoon class and still offer that support, but it only needs to be 30 minutes. It doesn't need to be that long block of time. That's too much. And it will, our children will suffer because of that. So I think we need to do, get more, especially for the high school learners. And at this point, I'm probably over my time. I do have one more thing. It's definitely something in the plan. I'm not really liking that. I mean, you have, you concentrate so much on six, on other things of measures of safety. We're assuming that kids will wear their masks with fidelity, and they won't. So I think the six feet's important. And before you get any staff in the building, please make sure it's safe and that you've assessed the buildings with HVAC and ventilation, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. You're never over your time. This is a new one for you, Member Smith. Member Williamson?
Thank you. So I want to thank the administration for, again, prioritizing safety of our community with this plan. And I think that the way it was presented was very thoughtful and very detailed. Looking at it as a principal myself, I looked at it and thought, this is something that I could take and run with. And, you know, I'm glad you spoke a little bit to the scheduling because I think as a principal, I looked at that and I thought, I know what to do with this. I know what those afternoon hours would look like, at least at the elementary level, and how they would be productive. I think they're essential for that SCL work that we want to do with kids. And I'm wondering just, you know, as a possible solution, maybe a point of clarity for the community, if we had something from the high school that maybe just detailed what those, what that afternoon hours might look like. You know, there's ways that kids can sign up for or be expected to or asked to in an organized way. And I just think if Principal Bando had maybe a sample, that might help provide some clarity. I think it's really important that we are consistent across the district with what we're doing. So what happens curriculum-wise in Grade Three in Sterling is the same that happens in Grade Three in Holden. And I think that that PD time on those Wednesdays is going to be crucial. You know, we've never been able to have that in contractual time across the whole district, and I think they're going to-- And I think they're going to have an opportunity to share best practices, which I think is going to be huge. Um, and, and going to be beneficial for our kids in the long run. Um, the one question that I had is um, how, how on track are we for an M O A with the teaching staff uh, to be ready to start at the beginning of the school year?
So we have another meeting on Thursday uh, with uh, the Teachers Union. Uh, we'll be going through this model with them. We'll be talking about some of the different things that we've been uh, again, going back and forth on. And um, I, you know, um, my fingers are crossed. Again, I think this is something that all superintendents are working on. When you look at a lot of plans that are out there right now, much of it is dependent upon um, you know, M O As that will be put forth or, or, you know, between school committees and um, and unions. So we are, you know, we're lucky. We have a, a, a very um, strong union in terms of their uh, understanding of, you know, the important role that they play in kids' lives. And um, they're, they're very proactive with what um, you know, we want to do and how we want to look at, uh, you know, returning to school in some form or fashion. So, you know, I, I think someone mentioned it a little, you know, like Christine, um, Christina, when we were looking at, you know, really the safety of the buildings, ensuring that, you know, the air quality is good. You know, if we don't have uh, unit vents that are working, we're, we're going to be putting in um, you know, a, you know, if we can't get them fixed, whatever, for whatever reason, um, we'll be using um, the larger room air purifiers um, in, in terms of putting that forth. So again, I think much of that is just, and, and now it's just going to be kind of the, the nitty-gritty associated with the times and so forth and everything else that goes into discussions around um, you know, M O As.
Right. That was all I had.
Thank you so much. Member Woodland?
Hi, um, so I want to start off by saying that I really appreciate uh, having access to the drafts over the weekend, um, seeing those working documents, knowing that they're working uh, you know, and not ready uh, for primetime, so to speak. Um, but, but seeing the thought process is, was very encouraging um, to know where you guys are thinking and working and to know that we're not just shooting these questions at you out into the dark. But to know that there's a landing place, there's a source, that there, that it is a conversation. And I, I really appreciated that. That was a, a big, big A plus in my book. Um, I do have continuing questions. I think I'm going to just focus on what I think is the most pressing for a good portion of our parents. Um, and based on, you know, what, what you're saying about the phased re-entry, where our younger grades are um, the next kind of group of students who really need more attention. But I would just want to call out in the remote plans, um, so in the middle and the high school, there were examples of learning activities in the chart. So like introduce new topics through teacher-created videos, um, practice skills and concepts through bookwork. There's um, analyze current events, connect with other students on a collaborative assignment. There are all of these examples, but there were none in the elementary section. And I feel like that is actually the hardest group of students to make those examples for, so that parents feel like it's not going to be flunking their, you know, eight-year-old in front of a computer for three hours or six hours or however many hours. Um, and so I wanted to ask again about the examples of what those uh, chunks of time are going to look like for elementary students who need to physically manipulate objects, who need to learn penmanship and how to write, how to write, how to hold a pencil. Um, and looking at things like the sample schedule, an hour and a half, I believe, was the block for morning meeting. I, I don't, or maybe I, or, or maybe it was E L A or something like that. But that, that is a long chunk of time for a six or eight-year-old for this kind of interaction. Or what, what would it be? Would it be, would that E L A block be setting up an activity? And um, and you have your manipulatives and somehow provided with, or, you know, I don't know what it would be, but that's where I think a lot of parents are worrying that remote is just going to be putting out fires left and right from one kid to the next to the next, all trying to organize um, something that the kids don't want to do and will, you know, close the laptop screen on, on U-Board, like nope, I'm not doing that. And so tho, those are the kinds of things that I'm very concerned about. Um, and then on the other side too, is the parent training in terms of interacting with the um, the software, with the devices. I know that we have a lot of tech-savvy people in our district and we have a lot who, um, who aren't and maybe are good in one form, but don't know how to make their Apple product work with Google Classroom in this instance. You know, that kind of thing. Um, and then one other question I have that, um, actually, I'm going to save that for, for private. It doesn't need to be in this, in this setting. Um, the only other thing for um, that I want to highlight is about when we do transition to hybrid, I would really encourage you to be as bold as you were in March, where you did, you did the decision to close down the district ahead of the governor, all of the superintendents did, ahead of Governor Baker. He might have continued it, but you as superintendent, you called it and it was the right call. And it was the safe one, and it's what led to, I think, our community having the kind of good numbers that we do have now. I think that was a large part of it. And so when we do go to hybrid, I really encourage you to stick with the six feet of distancing and not go down to the three feet. Um, I see in the report a lot of mentions of three feet to six feet distancing. And I really want to encourage you to be adamant and clear that it must be six feet, uh, since we know that's what's safe. And um, and then also, when it comes to, I suppose the medical waiting room is the new term instead of isolation. Um, I think that the, there's a mistake in looking at it as one room needed per school. And maybe I'm misunderstanding that, because we, that's under the expectation that one child would be suspected. And that, we know that we can't expect that. So, and that's it. Thank you.
Dr. McCall, do you want to clarify that?
Sure. Yeah, sure. So um, when we're, when we talk about one, you're, you're right. If it, if it's a small space where you cannot socially distance, you can't have two kids in there and adults or, and a student in that space, then we definitely need more than one room. But you know, we're looking at spaces where we could conceivably have two to three students or adults in that space, you know, socially distanced, six feet uh, at least, wearing a mask. Um, so those are the types of, cause if they're um, you know, symptomatic a, and they're all, they're all kind of in the same situation, then um, you know, that's okay. And that's something that we've, we've gone through with Desi. Um, you, you know, and they've, they've talked about that um, as well. You know, in, in reference to, Bob, I don't know if you want to jump in, but in reference to the, the uh, examples at the elementary level, and one of the reasons why that, you know, and again, we, we, we did have examples in there, but there were so many examples that it just would have made the document um, you know, just too extensive. So we cut, we culled it down, um, but that is something that we, we will be sharing out. Uh, because that way, you know, again, I understand, um, your parents are concerned. Uh, they, they want to, they want to be assured that their, you know, kids aren't going to have to be in front of the computer that entire time. So like a block of time for E L A, E L A might be, you know, reading time. So you're going to do some reading and then, you know, then you're going to come back and they're going to work on writing. Like you said, penmanship, those types of things, how to hold a, a pencil. Uh, all of those types of things come into play uh, at the preschool level and, and early elementary level.
Um, sorry, I just want to jump in. Is there an expectation of when we might see some of those examples for uh, early elementary?
Um, we could probably do it later on this week.
Thank you guys so much. Member Young?
Thanks. Um, so I wanted to just come out and say like, this is a plan. You know, this is what I wanted to see. It doesn't lay out every detail. Um, but it provides a good framework for, you know, the people further down the line. You know, from administration to teachers and everything to be able to implement it within that framework. You know, thi, this is what I wanted to see before I could vote on a plan. Um, if I had been, been presented even half of this last week, you know, and with the caveat that it was a rough draft and was going to change, I wouldn't have had an issue voting for it. You know, that, basically, this is what I wanted to see. Um, you know, I, I don't necessarily agree with the whole plan, but it, this is a plan. Um, you know, the one thing that really sticks out at me though, and is, I'm, I'm still disappointed with the special ed plan in there. Um, you know, and I'd like to see the, the entire timeline of that moved up. You know, the commissioner stated back in June and July, that the students that are mentioned here in this plan should have been prioritized for in-person extended school year this summer. You know, to say we can provide about one day a week in person for these students by October 4th, it's, it's not acceptable. You know, there, there's schools in the state that have been open at 100% capacity for students from families comfortable with attending for over a month now. And you know, we're, we're saying that we need another two months to get to about a day a week and three months to get to two to three days a week. It, I'm not saying every kid needs this. Not even every kid within I E P needs this. Um, you know, but there's students that desperately need it. And you know, they're just unable to access any sort of education without that. Um, you know, and, and there's, there's nothing within this plan for consideration for those individual needs. Um, so that's all. It, everything else, I think, looks great.
Thank you, Adam. And, and, and you know, again, that is something that we're still trying to, trying to look at in terms of um, how we, you know, how we do get the kids in, where it's going to be. Um, you know, I, I, it's interesting, because we've had some uh, conversations about locations. Um, and i, it's an important aspect to, to bring up. So I appreciate um, that pushback on, on, on your part, on us, and we definitely need to look at that.
Yeah, just to follow up real quick, I mean, just to, I guess, get creative with it. Um, and you know, look individually on it. You know, it, in the, each individual student, be like, okay, this student, this student we can have come in starting this date. And then maybe one other student, not the only students in the school, but at least they're, they're finally able to get, you know, some of those services and needs, some of that education that they couldn't, uh, you know.
Dr. McCall, may I, with your permission, respond?
Of course, Chris.
Uh, so, um, I'm not sure where you.
This is Chris, this is Christine Smith, uh, the administrator of special education.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Dr. McCall. Um, Adam Young, I'm not sure um, where it's written or the understanding came across that um, by October 5th, students would be in only for one day. That's absolutely not um, my, my perception. I mentioned in the report that um, students would um, be coming in for sessions. Um, and then those sessions would increase in duration and frequency. So if you're seeing something that I don't um, that, that I missed in the edit, please bring that to Daryl's attention and then he will to mine. Um, because that's not at all. All of those decisions will be made individually. And um, I absolutely am demanding that everyone think as creatively and as out of the box as possible to get our kids in front of our teachers as soon as possible. So I am, um, that's absolutely my mission.
Okay, good. Thanks. It, um, I guess that was just my interpretation of looking at the 50% time in phase two. Um, and I may have just read some of that wrong, so.
Sure. And again, that's at least 50% time. That, that is, um, that's, that's to set a, a, a minimum. And absolutely not the, um, not the ceiling.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Um, thank you for those questions. Member Amos?
Hi, um, thank you for the additional details. I'd like to reiterate, uh, Member Mitchell's point. Um, I understand the need for attendance and tracking student participation in the live Google meets. Uh, but as others have expressed, I am quite concerned about the feasibility of that for students who need parents' help and those parents work during the hours of live sessions, or people that have bandwidth issues for parents working from home while live sessions are scheduled for school. Um, so I hope that the recorded option will mean attendance is confirmed through the submission of assignments rather than attendance in live um, Google meets. Um, for families that are, you know, for families that are working, have working parents. And I hope also that the option of using um, recordings, in addition to hoping that it's how attendance is taken for families that situation for students. Um, I'm also hoping that families are not going to have to jump through hoops to get approved to use recordings um, instead of live sessions. Um, or Member Smith's out-of-the-box idea for live sessions in the evening is an amazing, wonderful idea. Um, that's all I want to throw up there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Member Amos. Member Ayala?
Can I get to my mute button quick enough? Um, hi, so I guess where I'm at is um, kind of looking at the the 12 to 3 timeframe too, that everybody else is looking at, but I'm kind of devil's advocate on the flip side. I have a kid that is only going to look at the computer so long and have attention span to, to be able to handle so many Zoom meetings. I, I'm saying Zoom, I know it's not Zoom, but so many meetings in a row. Um, he'll start to lose it. I know he won't be able to handle it for so long. Having that downtime is imperative for some kids. Every child learns differently. Um, so I do agree kind of with Linda, Member Longbeal. Um, because staggering may help a little bit, maybe having some in-between breaks would be good. Um, that could possibly be helpful. Um, I do want people to realize too, when kids are in physical school, it, it's not constant, class after class after class. There's recess, breaks in between, they have to calm a group down. The, you know, a group of kids, you know, isn't going to be five minutes and then everybody's calm. So I think um, other, other parents and members and everybody need to remember the in-between times that are broken down. And it looks like everything's kind of squished in the morning, but to make sure people have help in the afternoon, I get it. Um, and I do agree with Member Mills saying, you know, really maybe doing some type of structural thing. Cause I can see some parents or kids not utilizing it because they just don't think to do it. Um, so having some type of structure would be great. I just don't think it has, I don't, I just don't think the nine to three school day is going to work, like for some kids. It's going to be overwhelming. Um, so I get having that block. I get it. Um, and then again, the hybrid model, if we end up in school, there is not going to be nine to, you know, nine to three learning either. There's going to be kids sanitizing and distancing, walking into schools. So in all reality, they're going to get their time in. Um, that's what I see. Um, so I just really wanted to point that out. Um, I don't want to go over my time, but um, it, it, one of my big questions still, and I know a lot of parents were, what, what, what are parents going to do um, if they're both working with their children um, during the day? And um, I think it was uh, Christine Smith that mentioned having the afternoon um, teaching model for families that really can't get to doing the mornings, because their work, I really think that's a great idea too. Um, so I definitely back that up. Um, and I think I had sent something in uh, mentioning, uh, I sent it to you, Daryl, Dr. McCall and um, I, uh, Deputy Burlow too, and it was just saying like, thinking outside the box, having a model where if you get kids in for hybrid learning, um, the most neediest children and having lunch, stopping before lunch even happens, so you don't have to worry about the six feet of distance and sending them home with their lunch. Um, I don't know if it's something that's workable or, you know, if you guys even, you might even have thought of it already, but I just think it's something that can be looked at to get, once kids do go back for hybrid model. Um, and I won't take any more time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Member Bennett?
Uh, thank you. Um, so, uh, so basically, um, I want to thank you for being just, I mean, this, this plan is exactly what we needed to see. Um, it makes me feel so much better, um, about. Um, about this whole process, uh, there were just so many questions. Um, and I feel like just so many of them have been answered and you've been so, um, you know, open. Uh, to to suggestions and just thank you for all of that, I can really feel that that, um, that you care. You know, not only for the safety, um, but definitely for the emotional well-being of all of the children, um, of the district. Um, and I want to thank, uh, the school committee also, you all said everything that I would ever, you know, say, you're you're awesome. Uh, thank you, um, uh, for being so so thoughtful, um, and really just, you know, the. The the mental bandwidth that 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 all takes, you know, from from everyone, you know, in involved in this. Um, it's it's incredible to see that all come together. Um, and I want to just, I just want to. Recognize and give some time and and to recognizing that that making change is hard. Um, and that I think that we're feeling, um, and seeing a lot of fear about that change that is going to be occurring, um, from not the normal. School plan that that we've that we've normally had, you know, going back to school, it's not gonna look the same and. And that is scary, um, but, uh, but change is is always an opportunity. Um, and, uh, we, you know, a lot of us have have kids, uh, and kids love YouTube. Um, and that is on the computer, uh, and and I think that this is a great opportunity for teachers to. Um, teach in really engaging and fun ways, um, and I have seen so many engaging and fun ways online demonstrated and I'm sure that. That, uh, that our teachers are going to take that opportunity to make this a fun, um, experience for those kids. Uh, going in to school this way, um, and, uh. Uh, I'd like to, um, let's see. I have one more thing, I think, maybe not, maybe it's been said, maybe I crossed it off, oh, screen time. Um, so, uh, you know, that has always been something that that just parents have been fighting against. We don't want so much screen time, we don't want so much screen time, but now in these times, you know, um. Uh, it's like, it's like we're we're kind of, you know, fighting for for more screen time. Um, and just to keep that in mind too, that, you know, I work from 9:30 in the morning and then have school committee until what, what time is it? When are we gonna be off?
Not 11 yet, Krista.
Yeah, okay, okay, thanks, yeah, so that's what I do. So I feel like maybe I'm getting screen poisoning, and so I wouldn't want the the kids to be. On and watching and being in front of a screen, can you imagine, you know? Pulling someone off of like playing and actually engaging with some physical object to be like, no, yes, it's it's screen time, sit here. Um, and, uh, it's just the opposite of what we've ever been fighting for before. Um, so thank you just for for putting all of that in there, um, and, uh, really taking into consideration everyone's feelings and emotions about everything. Thanks, bye.
And your last point, I think, uh, is is one that, um, has been ingrained in my head by my wife, who. She is a media professor at Worcester State and again, um, in the communication department, and it's it's screen time, and she's been studying this for. 30 years, um, and the effects on students, so it's something that's, you know, that we are really cognizant of. Um, Bob and I have talked about that, and again, that that afternoon time. We we literally, I don't want a kid sitting in front of a computer for six and a half hours a day. Um, it's, I'm not gonna support it at all, it it doesn't make any sense, it it's not, it's not good for anyone, so.
Absolutely.
So I I really want to make sure that we do this in a way that is supportive of families, supportive of kids, so there's not too much screen time. I do want there to still be the opportunity for students to do other things.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you both, member Brown.
Well, last week, we did ask the administration, um, for a more detailed plan and, uh, Dr. McCall, I do believe you delivered on that. Um, I kind of wish that you read the entire plan, you kind of skimmed over it, uh, you hit the high points because. If you read the entire plan, and I really would like the public, anybody watching tonight, to read the plan in detail. Um, it has been, um, it's really thought out in depth. Can you please everybody? No, not at all. Um, as a negotiator for many years with unions. Um, I always try to put myself in the shoes of the person that's designing the plan. Um, and I try to put my, you know, feet in in the shoes of the teachers and and the students. And so I do believe at this point it is the best time to have this plan to to have remote. Um, I am glad that we are looking at like, uh, the October 5th for the highest need students. Um, I have, uh, my son is one of them, um, up at the high school. And, um, he really did not get anything out of it, uh, in the spring, and he was supposed to go to extended school year. Um, and we never got him in, um, so he's really, um, he really needs, um. That interaction, and I do hope we could do it before October 5th, but I'm glad we have that date. Um, so, and then also the the target date of January 4th for full hybrid. And, uh, to echo a lot of members' point, we should only do that when it is completely safe. Um, to do so, we shouldn't force any anybody, um, into that position. Um, I do have a question on the role of the building principals. Um, I'm just wondering, have you like discussed that after a few weeks or a month, having the building principals, especially in the elementary. In middle school, to have like a town hall style, um, Zoom meeting with with the parents and getting their feedback. Um, and, you know, because we do have a lot of principals, we have even more APs, and so I was just wondering, um, what role, um, are they gonna play in this?
So Scott, that's a good question, um, you know, principals are, you know, and assistant principals play integral roles. In terms of, um, how the program is playing out in each of the schools. So again, they're working directly with teams of teachers, uh, they're working directly with parents. Um, the, just like an open house where you have, you know, the opportunity for. Uh, the principal to do something like this, uh, where they're they're live and they're talking about things or taking questions, that's exactly what, um, you know. I want the principals to do very early on, uh, in the school year, so that, um, again. People have the opportunity to, um, have discussions one on one, yeah, one of the things that we're, you know, as a big district. Um, we really have to decentralize a little bit, so what we're trying to do, it, so we want the consistency. Especially around, um, curriculum, but we also want to be able to say, at the building level, you can go directly to. Um, Mr. Canarchioli at Central Tree and say, hey, Mr. Canarchioli, how does it work with this, this, and this, and he'll be able to respond. Uh, we want to be able to ensure that, um, people have the opportunity to reach directly out to the administration at each building. Um, because again, it's nice having all this stuff funnel up to central office. But I think sometimes people really want to be able to say, okay, I want to, I want to talk to the person that's. You know, really doing the work in, whether or not that be the teacher, that be the administrator in the classroom. Or the, I'm sorry, the administrator in the building.
Great. Are they gonna be on the, like, on the Zoom classes and and things like that?
Yeah, so one of the things that'll happen is, again, this will be something that we talk about, um, with our with our teachers, but. There's still an evaluation process that occurs, so they will be jumping in at times to see how things are going, to talk with teachers, you know, doing. Pre-meetings, post-meetings, uh, those types of things in the same way, it's not gonna be the same as it typically would in terms of doing a. Uh, an observation of a of a classroom teacher, but, you know, there are still standards associated with this. That the state is, you know, expecting us to follow through with, which is what we'll do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, member Dennis, please.
Thank you, so I have a question and then I'll follow that with a comment. Um, so I appreciate the the phased approach, um, and, um, I I do notice, uh, however, that there is a qualifier of no sooner than. That's associated with each date, uh, for each phase, so no sooner than October 5th, October 26th, November 17th. Um, can you, uh, through the chair, to the administration, uh, speak to what are the exit and entry criterias for moving from one phase to the nut to the other?
So, you know, it's interesting, I I think I mentioned a little earlier, I met with, uh, the Department of, or the Boards of Health today, and we we talked a little bit about. Um, that concept, um, and they actually discussed, um, not necessarily getting locked into anything. Um, especially, you know, at at this stage of the game, as we're starting to see an uptick. Um, so they are also looking at more, you know, ultimately receiving more guidance from, uh, either, you know, for them, it's it's DPH. And they they actually meet with DPH twice a week, they have, uh, I think a meeting on Mondays and Thursdays, or Tuesdays and Fridays. In reference to, you know, metrics that we talked about, uh, the commissioner last week. Stated that he is working directly with DPH around metrics associated with the transitioning process, so we're hoping to get that. Um, sooner rather than later, uh, so that we can, you know, really start to define this a little bit more.
Thank you, so then the comment, and and I appreciate and kind of reflect on member Otmar's axiom, um, of not letting perfect being the enemy of good. Um, and and so for me, as I look at the plan, I I see a couple of things that that I would have liked to have seen, you know, one. Understanding the criteria, uh, for a phased approach, and quite frankly, and I think as other members have mentioned, accelerating approach as it stands right now. Um, it will not be for no sooner than 14 weeks from roughly today. That we'll be introducing kindergarten and first grade, even in a hybrid model, um, I I think that we can do better, uh, that's not perfect. Um, we know that there are gonna be curricular changes, although we've not had much discussion or any discussion hardly at all about what those curricular changes are going to be, and that certainly is impactful. Again, uh, not perfect. Um, for me, uh, halftime on learning, uh, as one of the, um, parents, actually several of the parents mentioned. During the public hearing, uh, many of the members today have raised questions about it. Um, only achieving half time on learning, because I'm not not that convinced that we've made the argument otherwise. That to me is not good enough, um, so when we look at member Otmar's, perfect being the enemy of good, what is good enough? Um, I'm not suggesting that, uh, we have time on learning, uh, fulfilled completely by, uh. Synchronous, uh, instruction, uh, on screen. Um, however, there does need to be dedicated, uh, topic specific instruction, uh, perhaps in a blended modality. To be able to achieve that, and I think a number of members have offered different kinds of suggestions on how to do that. But as it stands today, uh, a plan that only has, uh, roughly two to three hours per topic, uh, per week. Um, with everything else being very loosely defined, uh, is not good enough for me, thank you.
Thank you, member Dennis, last but not least, um, and then we're gonna get to our students with any comments or questions they have specifically on this discussion, um, member Gusterson.
Okay, um, many of my questions have been raised, but I still have a few, so, um, I'll try to be quick, prepare with me. Um, I will echo the inconsistency between the three and six feet, and I hope that in the final plan, perhaps that can be. Um, clarified to six feet in all places because there was some inconsistency. Um, I also, with the attendance, had a question, I'm I'm really just pointing this out, um, logistically, that in the online expectation section. It was phrased, um, unless there was a medical note, they had to be present, and then in, um, the general attendance section, it talked about logging on anytime. So those two things are inconsistent, um, so I hope for the sake of our families that need flexibility, that can be clarified. Um, so my main, um. And I'll echo the lack of social emotional learning, um, I will say thank you for the detail and particularly the timeline, because this is, if we had this last week, we would have had a much better conversation, so. I appreciate it. Um, in the interest of time, though, my remaining, um, two questions, one is that you mentioned parent choice. Um, I would like to know how and when that would happen, because it seems like knowing the specific number of students who are remote only. Um, for the whole year regardless, would seem to be an important point right now. Um, and also if there are any teachers that find themselves in that situation, because again, we could. Direct our resources accordingly, and I think we need to know that in order to look at the buildings for hybrid and the transportation. Um, my other set of questions, um. Is regarding special education, and I have emailed about this, so you shouldn't be surprised, um, we have a lot more information, which I appreciate. Um, what's still missing for me, and I appreciate that we're having, or the CPAC and Christine are doing a forum this week, so that may answer some questions. But since we have to vote tonight, um, what's still missing for me is, um, I guess some sense of. Detail of how the day might flow for some of those students, you've laid out a very nice detail for all of the different age ranges. But if a student is receiving counseling, if they're receiving social, which may doesn't even need to be special education, if there, is that going to happen in the morning, in the afternoon block? Um, in the evening, um, if students are receiving OT and PT, when is that supposed to happen, even if it's remote? And when we move into the hybrid, um. I would like to know, when, or not hybrid, but when you start bringing those higher need students back, what will their day look like in general, I don't need to know for specific students. But for example, what were the typical schedule for the developmental or the ABA classroom look like in general, because you're still going to have a group of students. There, and I think parents would like a sense of that, even though we don't know a lot of details, we're still waiting to hear from unions. You're still waiting to hear from unions, and and we have certain amount of detail for general education students, but I think we need that level. For other students, and that's what's missing right now.
Thank you, thank you, member Gusterson. Um, do our student reps have a couple of questions and then they get to a motion?
Can I ask, did Daryl or Christine want to answer that, because everyone else had an opportunity to have, I I don't know if they have any new information to add. Um, but they responded to everyone else, so I didn't know, if you don't, that's fine. Um, but I, and on behalf of those families, I mean, I think I just want to know.
Sure, sure, Malaya, and I I think Chris, Chris wants to respond.
Yep, uh, thank you, um, so an individual schedule will look similar to what students are getting, um, when they are on their IEP. So students who have inclusion opportunities will be participating with their grade level peers in those inclusion opportunities. Um, students that have C grid services or pullout services will have those services delivered. Um, in this, in separately from their gen ed time, and every year, student schedules are made. Um, individually based on the cohort of students that they're, um, that they travel with, or their homeroom at the elementary level. Um, or their grade level, those schedules get created, and that will still be the process for this coming school year, so when is the best time to do speech for a student in the? Third grade, well, that might be an afternoon block, um, or it might be a push-in opportunity during their ELA block, because that's what's best for that student and. Um, what the state has charged us to do, uh, which is explained in the document, is for our special educators to. Communicate and engage with the parents as they create a, um. Almost a, an individual schedule of when the special education services. Will be delivered and at least describing how they will be delivered. So for example, oh, you have speech, well, while we are in remote, that's gonna look like this, or it's going to be. Um, a telehealth model, um, where we're, you know, or a small group model through telehealth. So all of those decisions will be made by our providers and. Um, parents and providers will be engaged in a conversation to, um, ensure that. Those IEPs are being met, those services are being met. You're muted right now, Malaya, I can't hear you.
Yep, Malaya, if you want to have one quick follow up, that's fine.
Ah, I was just gonna say, I appreciate that, um, and I think that's what, uh, people really need to hear, so we have a sense of that, so I do appreciate that.
Sure, oh, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Catherine or Kneecy, do you have a quick question?
I do have a few, so I'm sorry, I'll be very brief, um, first of all, I just wanna, I'm, I don't know if there's a mental health plan at all, I did not see one at all, but I didn't get the document in advance, so I might have missed it, but. I don't see a mental health plan in that document, so if you have one for students, I'd love to hear it. Also, um, what's the plan with the meets, the teachers thing, I'm very confused about that at this point. Um, you said you have a plan for family engagement on all those things, most of it looks like it's copied and pasted, do you have? Some more information on that, you were sending weekly updates at one point, I was getting them as a student, I don't know, I'm not receiving them anymore, will you be continuing to send them out? I haven't gotten one since like the 24th or something like that, um, and then. I would encourage that we should do breaks for maybe longer than those five minutes at the high school level. And then lastly, I do want to address member Brown's comment about how the teachers or the principals would be getting out to students, I have talked. I have talked specifically to Mr. Biendo about this and he has, says that he will be running either a live call or some sort of live forum where students can email directly in. And then he will have student leaders be in there to moderate the chat. So I hope that clarifies that. At least at the high school level, that's what I know. They'll be run and it'll be run on a grade level basis or something like that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Short and to the point with amazing questions. You're a rock star. Kanichi.
Yep, I have some questions as well. I like the idea about having breaks between classes, but even at an elementary level, I think we should have at least like 15 minutes or so because that can be like a snack time, just a quick time to take a break. Also, I was going through the reopening plan. I used Ctrl F, looked for mental, mental health. I couldn't find anything. Also, when are we going to hear about which clubs are going to be available remotely? And the only experience I had with breakout rooms is either silence. And even with the monitor there, it's also pretty quiet because it's very awkward for students to become an initiator for like talking. So I guess the monitor can help support that a little. But the moment you're passing the baton of speaking to the kids, it gets hard again for the conversations to keep flowing. All right, thank you.
Thank you as well. You did a wonderful job. So thank you. Are there, is there a quick follow-up to the discussion of the report? Next on our agenda is the actual motion to approve the plan. Does anyone have a?
Excuse me, Mike. I'm just, I guess I wonder if Dr. McCall or anyone from the administration would care to address the questions that either of the student representatives raised.
A lot of feedback. Thank you.
You didn't hear my question? I guess by, I'm wondering.
I got your question in and then it went kind of wild. Does anybody, Dr. McCall, any answers to Catherine or will that be forthcoming?
Yeah, we'll send that stuff out to them. You know, I can tell you, the, you know, mental health probably wouldn't be the terminology. We use social emotional learning. But again, that's something that Director Keenan's working on. And I think I talked about this last week in terms of the counselors and how that's going to play out. One of the, one of the times that we're looking at, and I think Deputy Burlow mentioned this a little earlier, is having, having those blocks of times like that activity time set aside for specifically those types of things. Again, we want to, we want to ensure that there's an adult that kids have access to. And it, you know, might not be a, you know, their physics teacher. It might be a, you know, a music teacher and that's the person that they make that connection with. So we're, not that they're not going to make a connection with the other teachers, but it's a, it's just, it's a person, it's an adult in the school that they can go to. That's what we're looking to do, you know, for that in particular. You know, in reference to, I'm just thinking, a couple of the other things. This, so this has already been, you know, we're going to put this out. This, I'll share this with all families, the plan with, you know, a cover letter that'll go out in school messenger. I wanted to send one out last week, but we didn't get it all prepared. Not even prepared, but the plan wasn't approved last week. So, you know, now having this, you know, set and ready to go, we'll do that. We're also looking to have, you know, again, I talked about this, a little less centralized and decentralized. So principals will start becoming more proactive about sharing information around what's happening at the building levels and how that's going to play out. Because again, I can, I can share the general stuff, but oftentimes the nitty gritty, the details, those come down to the specific building. So like, for example, you said Principal Biendo will have a, you know, meeting with, with students and, you know, they can write in their questions and so forth and he can answer it. That's, that's what will happen, you know, across the board. And in terms of activities, clubs and sports, they're, they're working in that literally right now. I mean, those are the things we're working on, you know, as we speak.
Thank you. Two follow-ups, member Haber and then member Gustafson. And then I think we're going to move to the motion because we can still have discussion within the motion itself. Member Haber?
Just a quick question. Member Williamson brought up the MOA and I wasn't sure if this was the time to discuss it or not, but since she did, I'm guessing we can. It's my understanding, and I didn't realize that, how time sensitive this MOA is. It is told to me that we have basically one Thursday meeting to discuss everything. And then after that, they need to have a seven-day waiting period before they vote on anything, which would take us to just about the start of school. So I'm wondering, how close are we? What discussions have been made? Are we close to an agreement with them? Have they seen this plan yet? I guess I'm just not sure where it's at and I didn't realize about the seven-day waiting period. So I'm a little more worried about the deadline.
I'm actually going to let member Brown answer that because that's part of the legal discussion. And that was going to be in his legal report, but I can take that out of order if that's helpful.
I'm okay with addressing it later, but.
Yeah, number Haber, yeah, we have been meeting with the WRSA. We were meeting before on our meetings basically for extended school year. And we were finalizing an MOA for that, but time ran out basically. And so we had discussions last Thursday. But I said, let's delay this until the superintendent came out with his report because we're putting the cart before the horse and we didn't know the plan yet. And so we all agreed to meet for this Thursday. And I'm not aware of them having to wait seven days. It could be. But, you know, we, they, we were all working to this together. And so hopefully it will prevail. And, you know, I'm hoping it should. They know that they'll get the plan. We'll all go over it on Thursday.
And I just want to add a layer of clarification, especially for new members, where this might be your first time working through any sort of union negotiation. Typically, these matters are part of executive session in order for both parties to have their privacy in this matter. To this end, there will be an executive session scheduled for the 24th. But that's typically where union negotiations are discussed until they're finalized.
Right. And we did ask today through Naomi Stoneberg, our legal attorney, to start formal impact bargaining. They sent a letter a few days ago asking through their current contract to have formal impact bargaining. And so assuming that they will agree to that and that on Thursday meeting, we'll start on that.
And I'd like to close the discussion there, due to matters of union negotiation. So you can ask member Brown questions via email or just wait till executive session where that conversation would be more appropriate. Member Gustafson?
So my question is just a quick follow-up to what Daryl just said about building level updates and about what's going on in particular buildings and notifications sent that way. I guess as a, as a school committee member, it might be helpful if there's some way we can get copied on some of those regarding district-wide issues that happen to be sent out through the buildings. Because I know there's sometimes parents come to me and ask me questions and I have no, like the transportation survey was sent out building-wide. I had no idea what the building sent out or when it went out because, you know, there are, and there's always a chance that some parents miss something because emailers sometimes forget people. But we had no idea that went out until a parent asked me and said, and I followed up and asked you. So I just throw that out as a suggestion to help us stay informed. I mean, we don't need to know every activity in the building once school starts or if it were a typical year. But in terms of informational things that are going out, surveys or updates related to a building or specific programs, it might be useful if there's some way to update us on those lists.
Thank you.
So we know what's going on.
Thank you for your point. Kanichi, just a super fast question if you don't mind.
Yep, I was just kind of reading through the reopening plan again. I was, I saw the student extra help and it could be given during the afternoon. But because we have the, the activity period or this online help, and I got, yes, you can have it scheduled for later. But what time are you expecting it around to be like after four, after, in the evening? Or during this block that the teacher had, is busy with their own group of students?
Good question. So I think the question just specifically is when is extra help going to be provided? What time of day?
So again, Kanichi, that's a great question. We're talking with, you know, the teachers about how that's going to play out in terms of timing. Because again, I, you know, I've heard this a couple of times tonight. We want to ensure that we are reaching out to them and connecting with them. You know, and it's maybe not necessarily during a set block of time. So we're looking at how that can happen. So in the same way that you might stay after school to work with somebody on something, you know, we want to, we want to ensure that there's still opportunities for that as well.
Okay.
Dr. McCall, we had amazing creative interventions happening all over outside of time, outside of school time in the March block also. I would expect that to continue, meeting the kids where they are when they, when they are available.
Thank you guys so much. Closing our discussion of the report, we now have recommendations requiring action by the school committee, primarily to approve the WRSD 2020-2021 school reopening plan and to authorize the superintendent of schools to submit said plan to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Do I have a motion on the floor?
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion on the motion on the floor? Linda, it's open because I saw you typing as you wrote for the end. I was like, okay. Linda, go ahead. Member Woodland. But unmute yourself.
All right. You guys don't get to hear my amazing first opener. No, my question is about the, what is submitted to the state in terms of the hybrid and in-person part of this plan? Would it be with the three feet to six feet or would it be with only six feet distancing for that part?
We can, we can do it either way in all honesty. You know, the way we have this broken down and again, Bob and I have looked at this, you know, with numbers in buildings and so forth. Six feet is really tough in a lot of our spaces, especially the high school. Those classrooms are small or especially the renovated part of the building. So, you know, putting 24, 25 kids in there makes it a little more challenging. Desi has said it's three to six. So there, they, you know, they pulled it back to three. Six is kind of the CDC guideline. And, you know, when I'm thinking about this in general, you know, and again, Bob, you can jump in if you want. The, it's really the high school that is most problematic in terms of the six feet model. Am I correct in that, Bob?
The high school has the most rooms. Linda, every school has at least one or two rooms, if not more, that there's issues with. They're just a little too small for what they're being used for right now. So the plan we would be submitting to Department of Education would have three to six feet, not six feet.
And, and the six feet would be the goal. And I think that's what we would always work towards. Okay, if we can do six, we can do six. If it's five, it's five. So that's really the grade that we're looking at it.
It's crucial right now.
Linda, you're, you need to mute again.
Sorry.
Yep. So I think I heard Dr. McCall say six is the goal, but it may not always happen. Member Mills had his hand raised in the chat.
Was there any feedback from Desi about your original report?
They actually reached out to me this afternoon and I'm going to give them a call tomorrow. So they're, they sent a general kind of email out toward the end of the week, last week. You know, basically saying they're starting to go through all of these and more detailed feedback will come out. So I will be talking with someone tomorrow about it.
Can you share anything that's substantive with the committee, particularly if it affects our action we're taking tonight?
Sure.
Any other members with a question? Member Haber?
And just to clarify, this is, even if we approve this, this is still a working document, correct?
Yeah. So no matter what, as we kind of go through this, this gets submitted to the state. They, they take a look at it. They say, okay, you know, you've checked all the boxes. We want to be able to have this as a working document so that we can update families, staff, you know, and have it be a live document ultimately. That, you know, there are still certain items that we want to ensure are, you know, we hold steady to. The safety precautions, some of the items associated with times and so forth. But I think we want to have some flexibility with some of the other things.
Yes, because as much as I can agree with most of this, I do have trouble with some of it. And I think that a lot of people have the same issues. So I'm hoping that there can be some changes made.
And as a request, if you could send out to the committee any changes you do make via email, that would be very helpful. Member Lavoy, then member Long Boleal, and then I believe it went to the point of order.
Yeah, I just have concerns that there are elements of this plan that if approved, they actually establish a negotiating position with the unions, i.e. timing, scheduling. And I, I don't think it's prudent for a deliberating body to approve a plan when we don't know how the staff is going to be deployed within that. And we're actually establishing that deliberating point by approving a plan that is going to be formally submitted.
Dr. McCall, any?
Yeah, so if I can, I understand where you're coming from with that, Matt. Most, most superintendents right now, most school districts are in the same exact position as we are. They're either, and again, they're either submitting these now. Actually, they probably are, they are submitting them now. But they've not yet had MOAs signed with their unions. There are many, many, many school districts that are, you know, in this position. So it is a cart and a horse. I understand that. This, the state isn't, you know, they're looking at this, they're saying, yeah, this is a plan. But as, you know, I think, you know, as we said before, this is a fluid plan. We want to ensure that we have the capacity to make modifications as necessary. In, because again, this is all new. It's so different. It's not like the, you know, what we did in the spring where it was like emergency. We've got to, you know, we've just got to turn a regular classroom into an online learning platform. This is something that we want to ensure we can do well, which is, and I think someone mentioned it a little earlier. Having that remote, doing the remote well is probably the most important part because if it's February or March and there is something that goes on in terms of a spike of some sorts and, you know, you have to move back from hybrid to remote, the teachers have it down. The kids understand it.
I would just like to offer a counterpoint to that. Most plans that I've seen across the state do not define what a school day is going to look like for students and give sample schedules and identify a free block in the afternoon. That is my point, that you're altering how a government, how an educating body would deliver their services prior to that being agreed to in a negotiation. And I, I think we're not following the proper process here. So when you compare the way that other districts are doing it, they're not doing it the way that this district has defined this plan.
Thank you, member Lavoy. Member Long Boleal had a question?
Yes, just, I do hope, as number Haber said, that this is a working document. And I, speaking of the negotiations upcoming with, with the teachers, I do hope you'll explore having more time in between classes and then perhaps having an afternoon class with them. Because I would think that they would appreciate having more than five minutes between classes just to clear their minds and, and then be more, be at least a little refreshed before they have to start with a whole new group of kids. And I, my sense is they would probably appreciate also the need for, for some structure in the afternoon. So I hope you'll explore that with them. So I think it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, member Long Boleal. Any other questions? Member Young?
Yeah, just to comment a little bit about Matt's comment. I don't, I don't particularly have an issue with approving this plan as sample outlines of the day. You know, they're not set in stone. As it is, there's a couple of different samples. You know, and those are the things that I expect to change as we go forward. We're already, you know, saying like, yes, we, we agree with the plan, but. the plan, but consider this, consider adding this, consider changing this. And those are things that I hope the administration is going to go forward and look at, and as they discuss with teachers and through negotiations, that's what's going to happen. So I don't feel we're necessarily dictating that, and I would be okay supporting this.
Thank you, Member Young. Member Gustafson, very briefly?
I am very brief. As I understood the previous question about spacing, the administration said that while we have said six feet all along, including last week, we are now saying we would accept three to six feet in some cases, even if that's only one to two rooms in each building and more rooms in the high school. I will say I'm not okay with that. I would suggest we put smaller classes in those because that is a major safety concern. And so I have a problem with that element of this, although I appreciate all of the effort you put into it. That is my major concern right now.
Thank you. Any further questions or anyone with a comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to a roll call vote. We do have other items on our agenda, including approval of minutes, committee reports, and I have extensive public comment if we can do a point of order after the vote. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, no.
Member Gustafson?
He skipped over me.
Oh, sorry, Member Brown?
And yes.
Brown, Dennis, Gustafson?
Gustafson, no.
Member Haber?
Haber, no.
Member Haines?
Yes.
Member, Ember is not here. Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Absolutely, no.
Member Long-Balil?
Long-Balil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Do you mind explicitly restating the motion on the floor?
Not a problem. To approve the WRSD 2020-2021 reopening plan, to authorize the superintendent of schools to submit said plan to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes yes. Member Ottmar, I believe, has his hand raised?
We'll have a motion to put forward to extend the meeting, although I don't know if you want to get the tally from Madam Secretary first.
Yes.
Seventeen to four.
Seventeen to four, so the motion passes.
With that, I move that we extend our adjournment time to 10:30.
Member Ottmar has brought up a point of order to extend the meeting to 10:30. Does he have a second?
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Back to the roll call. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Haines?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Yes.
Member Long-Balil?
Long-Balil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
And the chair votes yes. The motion passes. We're now extended to 10:30. Next on our agenda is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business tonight on our agenda. Next is the secretary's report, so the approval of the 1,348 regular minutes of the school committee, held on July 27, 2020, as enclosed. Is there a motion?
So moved, seconded.
It's a discussion on the minutes. Seeing none, member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis? Member Dennis? Circle back to member Dennis. Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Haines?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Dennis voted yes via the chat, Madam Secretary. Member Lavoy?
Yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Member Ottmar? Member Ottmar? Circle back to Carl. Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Member Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
The chair votes yes. Member Ottmar, are you with us? Let's see if Carl's still with us.
He may have stepped away. It said he left the meeting.
He stepped away. Next on the agenda is the approval of the 322 special meeting minutes of the Waukesha Regional School District Committee, held on July 29, 2020, as enclosed. Is there a motion?
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, we do it again. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Haines?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Lavoy, yes.
Member Long-Balil?
Long-Balil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell?
Mitchell abstained.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Thank you. Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
The chair votes yes. Member Ottmar, yep.
Woodland, yes.
Member Ottmar, back from a frozen computer. We're voting on the minutes of the special meeting, number 322, held on the 29th. What is your vote?
Ottmar, yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the 323rd special meeting of the Waukesha Regional School District Committee, and held on August 5, 2020, as enclosed. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
It's been moved. It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Member Amos?
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala?
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett?
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown?
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis?
Dennis, yes.
Member Gustafson?
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber?
Haber, yes.
Member Haines?
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum?
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy?
Yes.
Member Long-Balil?
Long-Balil, yes.
Member Mills?
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell voted yes in the chat. Member Ottmar?
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro?
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva?
Silva, yes.
Member Smith?
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson?
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland?
Woodland, yes.
Member Young?
Young, yes.
The chair votes yes. That is the end of the minutes for tonight. Next on the agenda is the treasures report and financial statements. Please direct those to Director Didi. Next on the agenda tonight are committee reports, and I think most subcommittees had the opportunity to meet. On my end, management met during the storm last week. I had a few technical difficulties holding the meeting without power, but we were able to meet and discuss via candlelight in my sun porch. It was an interesting meeting. We kind of set the baseline for the year, my expectations for looking at policies and bringing things forward to the full committee in an expedient manner. We got some updates from the administration regarding the reopening plans, and we went through some old business on the agenda and teased out what we may want to look at, including some indicators for student achievement in the coming year, and which ones we wouldn't be as strongly focused on. For this year as well, I want my strong focus in management to be on the 1,000 series of the policies regarding the responsibilities and role and ethics regarding school committee members, and to have those discussions as we move forward. And we will meet again monthly, so in September. Any questions for management? Education, Member Smith?
Thank you. The education subcommittee has met twice since our last meeting. We met Thursday, August 6, and we met tonight. At Thursday night's meeting, the subcommittee reviewed a draft of the district's reopening plan, and as part of its ongoing work, the subcommittee is looking at policies related to the COVID-19 closure and the district's reopening plans. On Thursday, the subcommittee looked at Policy 3813, audio, video, and scenographic recordings of meetings, and Policy 6260, assignment of students to classes. At tonight's meeting, the subcommittee reviewed the recent draft of the district reopening plan. Next, the subcommittee continued on to its review of policies relating to COVID-19 closure and district reopening plans. We reviewed three policies tonight. They included P3321.2, travel and study abroad, P3510, class size, and P3840, extracurricular activities. We will bring the policies that we took action on to the full subcommittee at a future meeting for you to discuss. And we will also be discussing district indicators for success at a future meeting. In closing, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 24, at 6:00 p.m. via Google Meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Smith, and thank you for letting me be on your meeting tonight.
Sure.
Business and finances next. Member Dennis, please.
Thank you. Very briefly, Business and Finance met at the last meeting of school committee, which was this past Wednesday, just an hour prior. We reviewed the costs associated with three reopening scenarios, which was then later shared as part of a larger presentation at school committee. We will look forward to hearing from the administration an update on what the budget picture for next year is starting to look like, and will work with the administration on scheduling our next meeting, probably within the next one to two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Member Dennis. Next on our agenda for subcommittees is legal affairs. Member Brown, I believe you already gave us an update. Is there anything else you would like to add?
We are meeting on the 17th, and we have a full agenda. We're going to go into executive session to, because we have been negotiating with the ABAPA Group, the PA Professionals, and the WAA, and just let everyone know those evergreened. We did not come to any kind of agreement. So we need to continue negotiating with them, and we also are going to be discussing the WRAA MOA that we mentioned. So we have a full meeting.
You have a full few meetings coming up, Member Brown.
Right. And I'll be happy to go over everything in executive session on our next school committee meeting.
Wonderful. We're looking forward to it. Though we might have to end a little earlier to do that as well. Coming up next, superintendent goals and evaluations. Member Lavoy?
Thank you. We are having our first meeting of the new body on August 27, and I'm happy to announce that we, as a subcommittee, are going to meet in person, socially distanced and in a safe environment. And I would like to see the full school committee follow our lead as a subcommittee. That's all I have right now.
Thank you for your update. Member Woodland, do you have a question on this?
I do, just to mention that it was not unanimous support for the subcommittee to meet in person, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. And I think as chair, I would like to take into consideration, you know, I've put a lot of thought into whether we should meet in person or not and when that should happen. And I'm going to continue to think on that matter, and hopefully to be able to offer some sort of hybrid method to the committee, as I know many of us may have our own underlying health issues, and to get that sort of space. So I wasn't really prepared to speak on that yet, Member Lavoy, but please do know that that is something at the utmost concern for myself as well.
Absolutely, and safety is the utmost concern in this household.
Thank you. Okay, facilities and security, Member Young?
Thanks. So we met last week on Wednesday, just before the special meeting. So we reviewed some of the plan from last week that we saw, and justifications for that, and we discussed quite a few things around that, looking at a lot of the HVAC, HVAC repairs that are needed. There's an assessment going on for across the district, looking at everything. Also, talking about PPE, and what was needed, some things related to that. One of the big things we had, especially since we're looking at remote, was talking about some of the internet capabilities of the district, infrastructure-wise. We also discussed that at the special meeting last week, so the teacher streaming looks pretty good. At our next meeting, which should be next Tuesday, we're going to pick up the mask policy that came out from MASC last week, and we're looking to use that as a framework to come up with our own policy that can be in place once we start having in-person sessions. Also, at that meeting, we're going to look at some other policies that haven't been touched in a while and start picking those up.
Thank you so much, Member Young. Our newest subcommittee, diversity, excuse me, diversity, equity, and anti-racism. Member Silva?
Yes, we had our first meeting, and since we are a new committee, we really talked about some of the goals of our charges. And I don't have my notes in front of me, but from my memory, what we talked about was looking into, you know, being more inclusive in terms of calendar, being more inclusive and looking at the curriculum about what is being taught at different grade levels in different subjects, when it comes to religion, when it comes to ethnicity, when it comes to culture, when it comes to the history of different countries and areas. We also talked about, as one of our goals, looking into professional development for teachers, what kind of opportunities are they given for education, maybe giving options of certain books, recommendations, looking at, one suggestion also was to bring forward and maybe educating our own school committee members on some of these certain topics as we go forward. So including our own selves along with teachers' professional education. So those were three, and we came up with five. And we also have a new meeting set up. Once a month, we've decided we'd meet once a month, and we have another meeting in September.
Wonderful, and thank you so much for your work, Member Silva.
Oh, and one more thing. We did talk about how to include student participation and maybe even public participation, since we can't have public forum. I know, and I don't know if Brendan can speak about this, but there's another group that's being formed. So we were going to be talking in collaboration where we can get the public opinion on our goals and how to go about it. So it's going to be in collaboration with all stakeholders involved, not just the school committee, subcommittee members.
That sounds wonderful. Thank you. And thank you. Brendan, do you want to speak on that quickly, what you were putting together?
I think Asma covered it well. More will be coming out about that when we have the bandwidth to do so, the mental bandwidth, which will be in this upcoming school year. But I'm excited to be a part of that subcommittee and that work going forward.
Thank you so much. Last but not least, audit advisory, Member Mitchell?
Yes, we actually had our meeting, I think it was a few weeks ago, it's the end of July, to review the 2020 audit. And have to say that, you know, we did do better this year than we have in the past. There's just a very few There's just a very few amount of findings, and none were what they considered material. So overall, the Dan Director Didi and his group did a good job. I think we should probably, we vote, I believe, to release that to the Business and Finance Committee, so they should get that during the next meeting. If we have time, we've been tied up with other more pressing engagements recently. And then the next meeting would be set up once the administration identifies the corrective actions and takes them, and we'll review that.
Wonderful, and I remember very clearly all of Member Mills's pleas to the community when he was Chair for members of the Audit Advisory Board. So now that we have a much wider audience, I feel like this plea might go on someone's ears that would be willing to participate. We're still looking for a member from Princeton and from Sterling. Any community member that would like to join the Audit Advisory Board, you can send myself an email or Member Mitchell, and we would love to have you be part of the auditing process. School Committee reports, has anybody met yet, or is that upcoming for the school year? All right. All right, so I have another.
Megan?
Yes.
Sorry, it's Malia. I just wanted to remind people again of the CPAC meeting happening on Thursday. So they haven't met, but they're having a special meeting Thursday at 6:30, which will be a forum via Zoom for question and answers regarding reopening, et cetera. And Christine will be speaking at it and answering questions, so I encourage everyone to attend. The link is on the webpage.
And as a testament to the fact that many people are watching, I do have many comments. And so I am hoping everybody can listen attentively to the needs of our constituents at the latter half of our meeting tonight. The first comes from Maureen Young at 434 Strusberry Street in Holden. As former Chair of the Watchers at CPAC, it is always my goal to build a community and positive working relationships between the members of WRSD, administration staff, and parents to ensure we're all working to provide our district's most vulnerable students with what they need for education. Some of you might remember me when I spoke at School Committee meetings in an effort to keep you informed when there were concerns or interesting news. I took pride in being a team leader with administration to better to better the experience for kids with special needs. I'm commenting today because I'm deeply disappointed in the plan put forth by the administration. It does not appear that they have given thought to the plan and how to get students the education or support they deserve. This is a call for administrators to figure out quickly how students like my son, whether in IEP 504 or high needs, back with staff and support, they so desperately quickly need quickly and safely. It can be done, and it has been done. As a student with special needs, I have lived through what might be the most challenging time our families ever experienced. If you're not aware, my son was placed out of district several years ago because the district could not provide an appropriate education to keep him safe. The gains he made when he left were huge because he was finally being taught with the right learning style and the right environment. When the schools closed everywhere and education went to remote, my son was not able to access this type of learning like many others in his demographic. Remote learning at home with a teacher on a screen was very different from the one-to-one structured setting he's used to. Many times, he would hit or throw the iPad we used, become aggressive to myself and destructive to the area around us. He regressed and we saw behaviors we haven't seen in years. The lack of in-person instruction, structure, and change of his education model turned into months of protecting him from injuring himself and others in our house, disruption of his sleep, eating, and development of extreme anxiety over school. I know this can't just be my family and feel for others going through similar situations. I take the virus very seriously. I understand it. I know its ramifications and have many colleagues in the field that help me get a grasp on the animal that it is. I prefer remote learning as the best way to keep us safe. However, for students like my son, it doesn't work and makes him regress and create an unsafe environment at home. Progress we worked for on years was unraveling before my eyes. For my son, this regression where he is now scares me much more than if we were to continue this way than even contracting the virus. His school, which teaches kids with autism varying degrees, was able to return in July 7th for all students. Today, after only being back for a month, there's a dramatic change in his demeanor, and his anxiety has lessened some. We are no means back to where we were on March 13th when everything shut down, but they're working hard with him to create a safe environment, him and his teachers. Many things are different in his school, but even for the students that are very sensitive to change, they are adapting well. Art, OT, PT, gym, and observations that we conducted over Zoom to the classroom. The students are learning to wear masks. My son, who a month ago I thought would never wear a mask, came out in the car today with his mask on his own. Do I wear every day that he goes about with exposure to the virus? Yes. Do I worry I made the right decision to send him back? Yes. Do I see the need for him to be in the structured environment with his teachers? It's greater than my concerns for the virus, absolutely. I urge you School Committee members to push for a detailed plan to make for students in the district-wide programs and others with high needs, so they have the option to get back in the building with their teachers and staff to get the much-needed support and education they deserve if individual families feel safe in doing so. These parents don't need more surveys or questions and answer nights or meetings or plans are proposed and nothing is done. They need decisions made. They need safe classrooms created and need it in place since September 16. If families feel unsafe for this option and parents want to stay remote, they can be handled individually. I can't stress enough that these options need to be available on September 16. The longer they're delayed, the longer those vulnerable students are devoid from the support they need. The planning will take time. It'll probably take all the extra days provided by DESI. I don't think there's any parent out there right now that if they're told we need to take until September 15th to plan how this is going to look for your child, so we can take care of their needs and safety. But come September 16th, if you feel safe enough, your child can return in some form of in-person learning. Not one of those parents would object to the time you need. The extended school year program this year was downright shameful considering access to empty schools that could see every student in a different room if necessary. This shamefulness should not continue to the 2020, 2021 school year. Thank you for your time. Next tonight, from Andrew Slocum. Hello. Last year, there were several issues with bandwidth available for Zoom calls with teachers and students. This could be caused by poor internet or outdated computers, laptops, or Chromebooks. This affected teachers as well as students. How are we going to address the issues that everyone has appropriate equipment and internet capabilities for online schooling? Will teachers' internet providers be paid for? Will they have high-quality microphones and cameras so they can be seen and heard easily? Will students who need help with loaned equipment and internet service get it? Will any of it be reimbursed? Kind regards, Andrew Slocum. The next message comes from Keith Darrell. Hi, thanks for your work. In a recent bus survey, you did not indicate if too many kids opt to take the bus, then we won't be able to support the needs and the school will be remote only. Without the stipulation, parents were not able to give an educated answer. My guess, based on conversations with parents, is that they would have answered differently if they knew the consequence of choosing the bus. I'm confident that families would certainly have made the sacrifice of having their kid transported by the school into a family or friend in return for their children being taught in person through a hybrid model. I recommend sending the survey with a detailed description of what it meant to choose each option. The next comes from Patty and Leanne Sinclair. Can you give us an update on enrichment? Is it required? Will it be graded? Can parents do their own enrichment in place of it? It feels like it should be optional when we're in remote, but when we're in hybrid, can you explain what would happen if a COVID-positive case? What would be the process and what information would parents receive? The next comes from Susan Stowe. Good evening. My question is about the grading during remote learning. How is the grading to be done? Will it be the same as in-person learning when students have support excuse me, I'm sorry, guys, support systems to help them? I'm worried about my children, one being new to middle school and the other entering eighth grade. There might be areas that they struggle in, and in the past, teachers have been supportive. How will they know a student's true abilities? Second, can a student who already, who does not already have an IP or 504 plan still be tested for possible learning difficulties or possible disabilities? From Susan Stowe. Next tonight. This comes from Christine Pizzoni. Thank you for all you've been doing. There's been a lot of talk about elementary and secondary education. What is your plan for the preschool at ECC? These kids struggle even more than elementary students and often need one-to-one care. Are there any thoughts about bringing them into the building for at least some of their planned time? The Massachusetts Department of Early Childhood has set up slightly different protocols than DESI has. Will this affect the planning at all? And thank you. The next question was from Kristen Turner. Where and when can we find the full report on the website? It's hard to read in the YouTube. Where and when can we submit a request for technology for our children? And what metrics will be used to move between the different models? This comes from Nancy Gunnard. Dr. McCall, I disagree with your comment that synchronous learning portion in the day should be limited to the morning. My daughter attends Bancroft and is at school from 8:30, 8 to 2:30, and does not spend six hours in front of the computer. She has four one-and-a-half-hour blocks. The first 45-minute block is synchronous. The second 45-minute block is asynchronous for each class. They have regular schedules with real learning and instruction and engaged all day. Under this proposed model, I imagine most students and teachers will log off at noon. I think our kids deserve a full day of instruction that accommodates breaks from screen time. From Nancy Gunnard. We have quite a few more, guys. So I'll entertain a motion in a few minutes if need be. This next message comes from Andy Palumbo from Paxton. Good evening. I want to thank the Committee and WRSD Administration for their dedication to the safety of every student in the district. Can't begin to imagine how many hours have been spent planning and adjusting. I have a preschooler and a first grader in the district and attended my first School Committee meeting in the fall 2019. I was a bit surprised at the sparse attendance by members of the community, but three hours later, I understand why that might be. It's a huge commitment to even attend a meeting, never alone the many subcommittee meetings. And on top of that, the actual planning and deliberation by the administration and the School Committee over the past months to start the 2020, 2021 school year, it's exhausting. I just want to thank the Committee and Administration for the thoughtfulness and care, which they approach what is what are almost impossible decisions. It's going to be impossible to please all of us in the district, but I do think it's clear that every member of the Administration and Committee cares deeply about our students and how this pandemic is impacting them. Thank you to all, including community members who spoke out on behalf of our most vulnerable populations. I'll close that, I'll close by asking that the Superintendent suggested future meetings continue to be posted online for greater community engagement for members even after the pandemic is behind us. Thank you for your time and work on behalf of the district. This next message comes from Nancy Parker. I would like to thank the teachers who spent endless hours working for the students in the spring. I also like to thank the School Committee members for their time. I feel like the district's administration has not been as open and honest with the public as they can. Seems like parents and teachers are in the dark. How do you expect parents and students to know each other without having ever met each other? Will they be able to meet one another in small groups in person before the news start? Has the district considered allowing elementary-age students to go into school for the mornings and older for the afternoons? All schools can be used, so class size numbers will be smaller. How will the special education teachers be evaluating the students who are supposed to have their three-year reevals done? When will students be given their schedules so parents can plan for how long students will be actively on computers? What students will be learning in person, how and when would they be notified? Will all students on IEPs receive the services due to them? Will the middle school online help and support be optional? That was a problem for this age group, and it should be the teachers making the small groups and then making that time mandatory. Next. From Christina Naaman. Dear Administration and School Committee members, as a third-grade teacher and a parent of two first graders, I'm disheartened to see a sample schedule for a remote model when administration feels it's developmentally appropriate for an elementary schooler to sit for a 90-minute Zoom for math or ELA or work on one subject for 90 minutes in a row. I'm also saddened to see a proposed schedule where ELA and math are only taught twice a week for our children that are learning to read or fine-tune their basic comprehension skills and develop a solid math foundation. I'm hopeful these are just samples and will be modified to significantly better suit the developmental needs of young learners. Next, from Michelle Greewall. Hello, my question, given the number of volunteers from our school system, are there plans to utilize volunteers, even remotely? I am certain you would have many folks who'll be able to help in any way to support our administration. I would encourage each building to identify where additional in-person or digital support would be beneficial, even parents that would help with tutoring and preparation, et cetera. Next tonight, from Leslie Hartley. Will the teachers be accountable to fully committing their teaching time to the students versus spring when they're they could be absent with the excuse they had to care for their families? Also, with younger students that do not understand how to use technology and computers, and both parents are working and unable to assist children, how will the teachers teach their students to better use the computer and technology to complete assignments? From Sean Wessel. Will there be a single sign-in across online portals, or will children have to need separate logins for each online platform? If both parents are working, what flexibility is permitted for attendance? For example, if both parents need to work during the day and assist children with work after hours, if they view pre-recorded lessons, will that attendance be counted? From Carrie. You said school will start remotely in September and that absences will count against students. What about kindergarten students who have parents that work outside of the school, will not be able to attend 9:00 to 3:00? Will affordable centers be available where children can attend WRSD? Yes, we do. I have probably, I have 10 more after this. Let me finish this one, Malia, if you don't mind. Will affordable centers be available where children can attend WRSD online kindergarten? Or will remote kindergarten be available for children to attend once parents are home from work? Children have been back to in-person daycare since June 29th with no issues. Sad that they can't figure out the same for kindergarten this fall. An in-person classroom is vital for children's learning to read. Parents have to work to pay bills. They can't quit their job to do homeschooling. Member Gustafson, do you have a point of order?
I did regarding time. It's 10:27. So if you have more, can I make a motion to extend the meeting?
You may always make that motion if you wish.
Sure. Sorry.
Motion made. Is there a second? Second. All right, we're going to do a roll call. Member Amos. Amos, yes. Member Ayala.
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett.
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown.
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
Your Gustafson.
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber.
Haber, yes.
Member Haines.
Yes.
Member Kirshenbaum.
Kirshenbaum, yes.
Member LaVoy.
LaVoy, yes.
Member Long Belial.
Long Belial, yes.
Member Mills.
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell. Ben? Not sure you're still with us. Circle back. Member Ottmar.
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro.
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva.
Silva, yes.
Member Smith.
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson.
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland.
Woodland, yes.
Member Young.
Yes.
Chair votes, yes. Member Mitchell, you still with us? The meeting is extended now to 11:00 PM. I'm going to continue with these comments. This is from Jennifer Finerty. Good evening. I'm not sure if I missed it or not. Will incoming kindergarten students receive Chromebooks or some form of technology such as an iPad to do their work on? Next. This message comes from Joe Westminster. Good evening, all. The concern of how the afternoon period would be organized could be resolved by having students repeat their schedule from earlier in the day. This would get students to set time to meet with a teacher, for a teacher to require a student to be in a small group, and it would resolve the problem of putting a student in a position of trying to decide what teacher they need to see. Prior to the closure of schools in March, the broadband at some schools was incapable of handling many connections. What has the WRSD done to ramp up broadband at schools such as Choxit or Thomas Prince? In a hybrid model, how are you going to give teachers enough time to plan for or conduct and assess both remote and in-class learning simultaneously? I'm worried that juggling two different models will result in less quality time for students. Thank you and stay safe. A question from Michelle Greewall. How is the Administration collaborating with unions? How can we be transparent communication to understanding collaboration and negotiations to satisfy concerns? The next from a student, those are always my favorite. Dear School Committee members, I'm a student at Choxit Middle School. I wanted to thank you all for your hard work for the school year. However, I have a big concern. I'm going into eighth grade this year, and I'm concerned about the learning process this year. I am many students learn by hand. by hands-on activities, but don't think this will be happening during remote learning. I know that I'm an older student compared to elementary students. It's just simply how I and many others learn. My math teacher in the spring was good about giving us assignments that we can print out and do hands-on or use materials we have around our homes. I found her class a lot easier than my other teachers' classes because of this. I feel that teachers this coming school year should assign a lot of hands-on learning activities as my math teacher did in the spring, so that we can replicate in-person learning and help us students excel as much as possible. I feel as though this should be acquired from as many teachers as possible. Sitting in front of a computer all day doing no hands-on learning can be stressful and difficult for students. I agree that for safety reasons, we need to be remote, especially because I have a very high-risk family member, but I think there needs to be guidelines for teachers on what our learning looks like. Thank you for reading this and I hope this will be taken into consideration. From Hannah Palmy. Next. Good evening, another student. My name is Emma Ziman and I'm a rising senior at Wachusett. Having the opportunity to witness the development of the return-to-school plan, I have concerns about the high school schedule shared tonight. Based on that schedule, high school students are expected to start learning at 8:20, have four to five classes a day, 40 minutes of homework per class, activity periods on Monday and Wednesday, and Friday's guidance meetings on Thursday, extending our online day even longer. And lastly, expected to be alert to 3:00 PM with only a 30-minute lunch break. For middle school students, they're only expected to start learning at 8:45 and have two to three classes a day, no activity periods, 30 minutes of homework per class and be alert to 3:00 PM. I do understand these are two different levels, but I believe this difference is too drastic. I also find that expectations are unattainable from a student that's trying to focus on her social and emotional health point of view. As students, we're expected to have back-to-back 50-minute sessions with minimal transition time. In-person, there's a variety of teaching methods that remote can't meet with office hours or not. We as students will need to process learning, apply learning, and the sample schedule presented tonight doesn't allow for that. The committee's suggestion of adding more academic blocks for high school days will limit our learning process and application time, and that's what makes us college and career-ready. The afternoon period appears unstructured. Will be used to complete application of learning, the expected 40 minutes of homework per class for seniors, college applications and volunteer opportunities in our classrooms. For example, I'm working towards my Gold Star Award for Girl Scouts. Appreciate your time. Would like to thank your consideration. Many committee members would like additional clarification on my statement. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you again, respectfully, Emma Ziman. Next tonight, from Renee Bouchard. Thank you all for looking over this plan very closely and asking a lot of questions before you decide what's going to happen in the fall. I was wondering if the district would look at other school districts in the state that make formal plans like Drakeet and Northborough, Southborough. Questions for tonight, why can't a student follow a traditional middle school and high school schedule and have their class for about five to 10 minutes less than they traditionally do? Has a faculty received or did they plan to be trained on the new Google Suite capabilities? Why is there a potential date for hybrids so late in the school year? Can the current plan be shared on the website for all? Google meets can be used for breakout rooms and students can be seen by the teacher. Teachers should start all lessons live and then have students work in real time with the Google Meet still on. The students can turn off their camera while working so they come back to engage in the lesson. There's so much that can be organized for teaching and learning. Thank you for considering my questions. She actually said that twice, so she's all set. And there's a follow-up comment, again, from Nicole Parker. This plan is much better and more detailed than what was presented prior. The administration should be sending out emails to parents and teachers, letting us know about their progress, and this would help us as parents to better know what may be doing, what may be getting done. Next, from Karen Sullivan. Hello, will there be flexibility to allow for learning in the evening for elementary school? My husband and I both work. We'll have to arrange childcare, but I don't want those people to have to teach at night. Please have some consideration for the opportunity to do assignments in the evenings. Many working parents are willing to meet and help. I'm one who would volunteer. I put this on every survey. My offer still stands. I know this task is daunting. Next, from Nancy Gunnard. Here are my questions for tonight. The proposed plan indicates three classes per day and each class is 55 minutes. The synchronous learning is only for half a day. Why are there three classes a day? Why does synchronous schedule for half a day? I'm under the impression that watching meetings, classes would not necessarily have to last the entire period. Is that correct? And if so, why? Quickly, before I move to motion to adjourn, yep, I'm going to see if there's a new one. Right. There are no, there are no new emails that came through during my reading of the emails. So with that being said, next on our agenda would be a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And seconded, I'll vote. Member Amos.
Amos, yes.
Member Ayala.
Ayala, yes.
Member Bennett.
Bennett, yes.
Member Brown.
Brown, yes.
Member Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
Member Gustafson.
Gustafson, yes.
Member Haber.
Haber, yes.
Member Haines.
Yes.
Number Kirschenbaum.
Kirschenbaum, yes.
Member Lavoy. Member Longbelil. Member Lavoy. Circle back to member Lavoy. Member Longbelil.
Longbelil, yes.
Member Mills.
Mills, yes.
Member Mitchell. Believe he's left. Member Ottmar.
Ottmar, yes.
Member Shapiro.
Shapiro, yes.
Member Silva.
Silva, yes.
Smith, yes.
Member Williamson.
Williamson, yes.
Member Woodland.
Woodland, yes.
And member Young.
Young, yes.
I believe member Lavoy has left. The chair votes yes. We are adjourned. Have a wonderful evening and a great week, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Good meeting.
Take care, guys.
Good night. Thank you.